All right, it's seven o'clock, which means it's time to get started with our city commission meeting. If you're able, please stand to join, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight on probably one of the most beautiful days that we've had in a long time. So appreciate everyone's dedication to being here tonight instead of maybe being out for a walk. So we'll get started with roll call.
Benson?
Here.
Brunick?
Here.
Hanoff?
Here.
Johnson?
Present.
Minor?
Here.
Schramm?
Here.
Villanueva?
Present.
Weber?
Here.
Mayor Mosher?
Here.
City manager Leon?
Here.
City attorney Denherter?
Here.
Next, under routine business, is to approve the minutes of the work session meeting of February 26th, 2024, and the regular meeting of February 26th, 2024. What is your pleasure? Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on the minutes? Anybody in the public? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, and anybody abstaining? All right, minutes passed. Number three, under routine business, is schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
I move that we pay the bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Is there any commission discussion on that? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye, motion carries. All right, we do have, next on the agenda, a proclamation tonight. A lot of people know March for St. Patrick's Day, March Madness, probably a lot of you watching basketball games. I'm sure some of you will be checking scores. There's a few games going on tonight. But it's also March for Meals, so a very important event in our community. And I know I've been already starting my, like, finger calisthenics and stretching to do my rocking to raise money for the center. As I'm sure, I've got a few fellow commissioners that are also doing the same thing. So we're all getting ready to go and rock here, coming up here shortly. So want to do a proclamation for the March, March for Meals program. So whereas March for Meals, hashtag Save Lunch, is a campaign which seeks to raise awareness of senior hunger and to encourage action on the local part, the part of the local community during the month of March through volunteer recruitment and fundraising initiatives. And whereas March for Meals, hashtag Save Lunch, involves mayors, elected officials, and other employees throughout the city to help raise awareness of senior hunger in their local area. And whereas 2024 marks the 52nd, excuse me, 52nd anniversary for the Meals on Wheels Association, now therefore, I, Stephanie Mosher, Mayor of Yankton, do hereby proclaim March as the national March for Meals Month in the city of Yankton. And I know tonight, Chris Thury is here from the center, and Brian Birch, I know, is also, I believe, a board member. So I'll have you guys come up. We'll do a picture here. And then, Chris, I don't know if you have a few words you want to say, maybe talk a little bit about the date and the event. Stay right here.
Well, you guys want to click through? We'll go, sorry, do you want us over there?
Now we all have to exercise.
I'm scratching.
So yeah, Chris, if you want to say a little bit about kind of what the month means and the activities going on, and I know, like, I gave a little foreshadowing, I guess, for an event coming up.
So the whole month of March is typically a fundraising month for the center. And the 18th is our annual Rockathon, and that is, it's our 10th annual this year, actually. And that is where we solicit members of our community, several here in the building tonight, to go and raise funds for Meals on Wheels for those seniors that can't afford to pay for meals. Right now, we currently have 35 people on that list. And I know there's more people out there, so if we can spread the awareness that we're here to help, we'd be more than happy to do that. Our goal is to raise $50,000 on March 18th. And once we do that, we're going to be able to provide over 15,000 free meals to those community members. So also important, the hashtag Save Lunch is, it's a national campaign through the Meals on Wheels America Association. Right now, the Congress has extended the deadline for federal funding for the Older Americans Act, which is the funding that provides financial support to nutrition programs across the United States. And they've extended that deadline to the 22nd of March. So we're hoping they don't decrease our federal funding or eliminate it. So that's what we're doing, the hashtag Save Lunch campaign for. We're filling out what Meals on Wheels means to us at the center on paper plates. And we've got a big pile of them on the table right now. We're going to send them off to Washington on Monday. So thank you for this, and good luck to all you guys rocking. I'll see you on Monday.
All right, I love it. Thank you, Chris, to you and your board members and all the folks doing all the great work at the center. Happy, we're all happy, I know, to be a part of that. So if you haven't donated yet, so I'll give a shout out. If you haven't donated yet, I know Facebook is blowing up with, with all of the rockers that are rocking. So it's pretty easy to pull up that list to see who's rocking, I think, in 15-minute intervals throughout the whole day. So if you haven't been asked or had a chance to donate, and so look up the list, a lot of great folks in the community involved in that. So great opportunity to donate, you know, to them or to me. So personal plug. Shameless plug. But I do know I have quite a few fellow commissioners rocking as well. So yeah, so thank you for that. All right, number five, under routine business, is the city manager's report. So I will turn it over to city manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. I just gave Mayor Mosher some money for her Rockathon challenge, so I have donated, and I'll be there on Monday as well, to enjoy the center and enjoy their lunch. Look, a couple of updates. On Wednesday, staff will be meeting with some of our community members to help us talk about the facade program, the downtown facade grant. Commissioner Schramm will be representing you. So we will be visiting about the applications and come forward to you with a recommendation in the near future for that opportunity. With the beautiful weather we've had this weekend and today, the couches are out. People are ready for citywide cleanup, and we will be ready for citywide cleanup, but we're not ready for citywide cleanup yet. We ask kindly that people do not start putting things out on the curb until the 23rd, which is a couple of weeks here yet. So we appreciate that it's warm and you want to get things done when it's nice out, but we also want to keep things looking tidy and put our best foot forward. So just hold off on all those things. There's a lot of information about the curbside collection that'll start on Monday, April 1st. And we'll move around to the neighborhoods until we get everything taken care of. There's also some restrictions on what you can put out on the curb. We ask people take a look at those and stay within the guidelines there. Also, if you don't want to have things out on the curb, or you've put something out on the curb now and you just realize, I shouldn't have done that, there is opportunity, starting, I believe, on the 23rd as well, to take things, or perhaps it's starting now, Adam. 16th, March 16th, you can start dropping off at the transfer station for no charge. So if you just wait a week to start dropping off, that would be appreciated. Wanted to give you, commission and the public, an update on West Side Park Pond. If you've driven past there, you've seen that the contractor is at work there. They're taking down the rock. Once all the rock is taken down, they'll start preparing the bed of the pond for that liner. So they're diverting the water that's coming from our well now, and they'll continue to work there. So we'll be updating the public as well so they understand where we are in terms of the phasing of the project. There is an election coming up. I know you're aware of that, so please take a look at our website. If folks are not registered to vote, they should do so. If they cannot come and vote on April 9th, they should find out what they need to do to absentee vote. So we have all that information available for them as well. So make sure that you are talking about that in the community. It's a really important election, as you all know. Unless there's questions for me, I think you have plenty of business to get to this evening. We do not have a topic for the work session that you have on consent. I'll be visiting with staff tomorrow about that. I do know that there are some conflicts on the commission for that date, so there's a chance that we may, if we don't have a strong topic ready for you, we may cancel that. But unless there's questions, I'll let you get to your business.
Are there any questions of the city manager? All right, seeing no microphones, come on. Then we'll move on to public appearance. This is the time for the public to appear in front of the city commission on something not on the agenda tonight. Seeing no movement, then we will continue on to the consent agenda. Number one is setting the date of March 25th, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the commission chambers for our next city work session. As Amy just shared, there is no set topic yet, and should one not come up, we will not have that meeting, but it's still good to have it on the consent agenda tonight so that proper notification goes out. Number two is consideration of memorandum 24-54, recommending approval of the application from Yankton Rib Fest, which will take place downtown around the Walnut and Third Streets and the exact locations in the commission packet. So tonight, then transient merchant license for June 8th and a special events dance for June 8th. Number three is consideration of memorandum 24-55, recommending the approval of applications from the Yankton County 4-H Clubs, doing business as the Yankton County Fair, which will take place at 905 Whiting Drive. You can see there in the packet for one, a transient merchant license for Thursday, August 1st, 2024, which is Friday, and then August 2nd, and then August 3rd. So, oh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, sorry, I missed that. So August 1st through the 3rd, and then a special events dance for Saturday, August 3rd. And finally, number four, under the consent agenda, is to establish March 25th, 2024, is the date for a public hearing for a special on-sale malt beverage retailer's license for three days, August 16th through the 18th, 2024, from Yankton Area Riverboat Days, Inc., at the following location. I think we all know that, but it's Riverside Park. What is your pleasure? So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, and anybody abstaining?
Abstaining affiliation.
All right. Motion carries then on the consent agenda. Moving on to old business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 24-63, the Comprehensive Plan Consultant Selection Committee Recommendation. Before I ask for a motion from the commission, Amy, did you kind of want to walk through, or Dave, Dave, it doesn't matter, one of you just kind of want to walk through the process and kind of how we got to where we're at tonight?
Sure. I think both Dave and I have a little bit to say on there, but I'll let you, I'll let Dave give you an overview, and then we can talk a little bit more about the process of selection.
Sure. As you know, the Comprehensive Plan is a 20 to 25-year document, typically, as far as the lifespan is concerned. We budgeted for it, you as a commission have, over the last couple of years, and we are finally at the point in time where we're going to kick this thing off. It's an exciting point in time because this is the document that looks at the community in more of a big-picture perspective and takes all factors of growth and changes in development trends into consideration and packages all that into one plan that's kind of essentially our bible for 20 years, if it's a valid plan. The last time we did this was in 2003. That plan has stood the test of time really well. So per your direction, through the budget approval process, we went through a staff process of creating an RFP, and that went out, and we had four consultants submit proposals. We had a consultant selection committee, as you can see in the memo, who was a part of that, go through and review those documents and select two to interview. Those two interviews took place, and they were both very good discussions. And the selection committee met thereafter, and after a thorough discussion, formulated a recommendation that the city contract with RDG Planning and Design for the provision of services for a comp planning process that'll last a little over a year.
And I just wanted to add, so the commission was aware, one of the things I've been wrestling with is, how do we communicate the comprehensive plan at a time where we also need to be updating our strategic plan? How does that all work together? And so we asked those that we interviewed that question. And RDG actually offered that, you know, some of the legwork that we do with the community is the same. And they were able to also provide us with a cost estimate for sort of an additional addendum, so to speak, to the comp plan to assist us with the strategic plan, once they get far enough along with the community process. And so that's not before you this evening, that's a future commission action. But I just wanted to put it in the back of your mind, because we were impressed with their capabilities. And RDG happened to be the firm that helped us last time. So for a little bit more money, we can get another initiative, another plan created that would directly reflect also what's in the long-term comp plan. So that's more information that's in your packet, but tonight, we're just asking you to act on that comprehensive plan memo.
The other piece of information that I can verbally report now is the planning commission met at 5:30 tonight and did also recommend RDG to be the selected consultant.
Dave, one thing you mentioned at the planning commission meeting was the selection committee didn't know the cost that each agency proposed.
Yeah, so when we put the proposal together, I had, of course, searched other communities and how they went through the process. And one of the things I thought would be interesting that I saw in another community was to have the consultants submit their fees in a separate closed envelope, and then let the selection committee go through, review the proposals, go through the interview process, have their discussion, formulate a recommendation, before I opened the envelopes to tell everybody what the submitted fees were. And yeah, so the selection committee had selected RDG prior to finding out what the fee structures were.
Yeah, that was interesting. I know I sat in for Commissioner Schramm during the interviews, and I know I was really nervous when we got to it. And I don't know if Dave purposely kept them last to read what that bid was, but excited. I would tell the commission in sitting in those, you know, we did, as Dave said, had two really good companies come in. I think they both would have did a good job, but I think for me, in looking at RDG, it was a little bit appealing that they had done the 2003 Comprehensive Plan, so they had a really good foundation and understanding of Yankton. It stood the test of time. For folks in the community that don't know, our comprehensive plan isn't something we do and sit on a shelf. It's a very active plan. And so I thought, you know, with that history and having that under their belt and already being really familiar with our community, that kind of really put that over the top for me in looking at where they maybe can take us for the next 20 years. I would also encourage folks to look at the packet. In the packet is then the schedule, if they're selected and approved tonight by the commission. There is a schedule in there, and I know it was really important when we did the media review on Friday. This is not something that just the commission and the city staff put together. You will see there's several opportunities in that timeline for community input. So really important, as you can see in there, I'm looking down at one, looking at August, Community Roundtable and Listening Session, just as one example. So really important for folks to, if you want to be a part of it, to really kind of figure out what does Yankton, which direction are we going to go the next potential 20 years, and you want to have a say in that, to make sure you're watching for that information. But that's what I really like about, if you're going to use the word comprehensive plan, that all voices get an opportunity to be heard. So I think that that's great, too. So those are a couple of comments I wanted to throw in there as we're looking at that. So unless the commission has other thoughts or comments, I guess I would ask, what's your pleasure?
As has been stated here several times, RDG has done tremendous work for us in the past, and I appreciate the efforts of the community at that time to create this document that has served us so well. So very comfortable making a motion to support us moving ahead with RDG. And this is not part of the motion, but I think it's, it would be wise to incorporate the strategic planning as part of that. But the motion is to proceed with the contract with RDG for the comprehensive planning.
Second. All right, we do have a motion and a second to move forward with RDG for the comprehensive plan. Now that we do have a formal motion, is there any questions or comments from the commission? All right, anybody in the public? Roll call.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye, motion carries. So look forward to that. And again, just keep an eye on all the information and announcements coming as tied to that, so that we can get plenty of input. Number two, under old business, is consideration of memorandum 24-53, regarding a request for a special on-sale liquor license for one day, June 8th, 2024, from Rock and Rumble, Inc., doing business as Yankton Rib Fest, at the location, following location in detail, but basically along Walnut and Third Streets. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye, motion carries. All right, number three is consideration of memorandum 24-57, recommending approval of Resolution 24-14, the notice of public sale for a package off-sale liquor license, and to authorize staff to proceed with the timeline set in memorandum 24-57. I'm going to pause there, because when I was reading through the packet, the timeline that I saw in the packet, and I know I did share that with the commissioners, was not necessarily the timeline that I had understood that we discussed at the last meeting, and kind of taking more of a slow roll on getting this out and maybe looking at, start putting it out for bid around Memorial Day or right before that. So I did send an email to Lisa, and want to give her a chance to just kind of walk through. I know she followed up with you all after I alerted her that I had emailed you all saying, I understand. So she didn't get nine emails, I guess, noticing that timeline. Wanted her to walk through that, and then anything Ross may need to add as far as legally, since we do have technically a published calendar, you know, in the packet, what are our options there as well. So I want to start with that first. So Lisa, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor Mosher. Yes, following up from last meeting, we did get a motion to start the process again for our package off-sale liquor license. You, as a commission, approved to start the minimum bid at $50,000 and have a non-refundable application fee of $100. Our revised ordinance that was done earlier this year, we do have to have a resolution passed to approve of those fees. So that's part of tonight's memorandum. You'll see the resolution attached there. And then we also include the timeline. So we have the legal notice being published for the first time, proposed as March 15th. So conferring with Ross, once we publish in the newspaper, that's when it starts, gives us the option for people to start giving the finance office bids. And usually, our process in our office is just hold the bids until the bid opening date. Ross, if you want to clarify more on that?
Yeah, we'll be preparing at the staff level a form to be used by anybody that wants to submit a bid, and that will become live the day that we publish. So no one will be able to submit a conforming bid without having that form available from our website. So it should keep everything organized, so we don't have any questions about early submission, given that our ordinance has a tie goes to the earliest submission rule in it. We talked through at the staff level about what happens if someone submits something early and it happens to be a tie. So that was the way that we came up with making sure that didn't happen. But timelines can be adjusted. I believe that Lisa's email to all of you suggested a few different breakdowns, if any of you want to change the timeline from what's in the memorandum.
Yes, and that's, so that's an option, too. You can also move, when is the first time we're going to publish that legal notice? Per state statute, we have to publish at least, not less than 10 days before the date of the bid opening. So that's something to bear in mind. So we can, you know, if we put up a publication in the newspaper this Friday, that intentionally gives a person two months almost until the bid opening date. So it's really up to what you prefer. That's all an option to move. And then as far as the bid opening, I had the intentions of doing the bid award by Memorial Day, but if that, if you prefer, as a commission, to wait until open bids after Memorial Day, that is also another option. Again, we can move at the pace you prefer.
Perfect. Thanks for clarifying that, Lisa and Ross. So with that, are there commissioner questions as tied to this? If not, then what's the pleasure of the commission tonight?
I'm moved that we proceed as outlined in the memorandum.
Second. All right, so we have a motion and a second then to move forward with the schedule that is in the commission packet. Is there now any commission questions or comments now that we have a formal motion? All right, anybody in the public? Roll call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Schramm?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye, motion carries. All right, so there we go. Well, we got a timeline now for that, and that still gives us till right about Memorial Day for folks to be thinking about if they want to be interested in that. All right, moving on then to new business. Number one is consideration of memorandum 24-60, regarding Resolution 24-15, the addition of Bro Burger Bar to the Event Central Sales Tax reimbursement agreement. And before I ask for the pleasure of the commission, I do see Mr. Mingo moving to a microphone. I do think it's important for folks here and in the public to understand why, when we originally started this, we had said, you know, businesses that are in town, probably not eligible as we're going after new businesses. But, Dave?
Yeah, so the way we set up the agreement originally, any new business that moves into town and goes there is automatically eligible without commission action. We did put a clause in the original agreement that specifically addresses relocations of businesses that are already in the corporate limits. And this would be one of them, and the criteria by which the agreement states that they'd be allowed to be included is if they significantly increase their capacity to do a larger volume of business, they occupy more space, they
Thanks for that explanation, Dave. Other questions of the commission? If not, what is the pleasure? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and now that we do, is there any commission questions or comments? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Mosher?
Aye. Motion carries. Number two is consideration of memorandum 24-61 regarding resolution 24-16, a proposed amendment to the Event Central Sales Tax reimbursement agreement. Thank you for staying at the microphone, Dave. I think there's a lot to peel away here that we all really didn't have a chance to really discuss prior to the meeting tonight. So I think we need to start at the beginning and if you can kind of walk through what's all being asked tonight and, and all of that, we'll start there.
So as, as we just discussed on the last agenda item, there was an agreement in place. That agreement war, was for a 1% sales tax reimbursement up to $500,000 or up to as long as 10 years, whichever came first. The owner of Event Central, Mr. Matt Evans, is in the, is in the audience here tonight, and I'm sure he'll want to talk to you, too, has indicated that he has three nationally-known businesses that he has letters of intent with and is moving towards getting leases signed. And in order to, to make that happen, he's got, he has to invest significantly in the property, so he's requested an amendment to a total of $1.7 million or up to 20 years at 2% sales tax reimbursement rate. So that's, that's, amendment would be to go from $500,000, 10 years, and 1% to $1.7 million, 20 years, 2%.
Dave, maybe talk a little bit about, have we done things like this before? And then in the commission packet, you have three kind of bulleted items for things to consider in this proposal that I think would be helpful to walk through as well?
Yeah, so the scope of the project that Mr. Evans has described is, is approaching $6 million. So the, the total ask for reimbursement, as far as the cap is concerned, the $1.7 million seems proportionally, you know, correct, just when, when looking at the big numbers. The city commission in Yankton has never done a 2% sales tax rebate. It's always been 1%. So things to consider are, you know, what, what are past recipients going to think about that, and what kind of precedent does that set? So if the commission decides to go that direction, we would ask for very specific differentiation between this project and what others may be in the future so that we could, could, you know, keep that straight as we discuss the possibility of using sales tax rebate as a tool in other instances. And that is something we get a call about fairly regularly, so, so staff would much appreciate your, your input on that. And then 20 years is the other part of the request. City of Yankton has never agreed to a sales tax rebate over 10 years. I don't know that 10 years is a magic number, other than it's kind of a generational sort of thing in a way for, for a business in this sort of program. So that, that's the number that was landed on at the time that, that these programs started, and it seems to have functioned well. And the vast majority of time, those sales tax rebates sunset before the, the time limit is up anyway because they, they meet or exceed projections with their sales. So I'd be happy to try and answer any other questions you might have.
I would actually probably ask Mr. Evans to go to the podium, because I do think, I'm sure all of us are going to have questions long before we want to make a motion so that we can understand going on here. So Matt, maybe if you could talk a little bit to the commission, and then I'll give them a chance to ask either Dave or you questions, maybe walk us through a little timeline, because I'm feeling like all of a sudden this is coming out of nowhere, to be honest, and we're getting high pressure to go, we got to make a decision now. But I know that national chains don't move that fast. So maybe walk us through this, the timeline, the plan, why you're asking for this tonight, maybe start there, and then we can go from there.
Okay. So as we've, as we've talked about in previous meetings, it's where and when, they say, having something done in a timely manner is like very important here. This popped up just as fast, basically. We received numbers back, and there's a significant gap of financing at even a break-even level because the mall has been left in zero maintenance, basically, as far as what they've done. So basically, like, everything changes every single week. My broker is here also, if you have any questions, Ryan Tisdale. We work very hard to try and get this figured out. Things change on a day, on a minute. For instance, just about an hour ago, two hours ago, we were then presented with about another $300,000 hit. I'm trying my hardest here, guys, to work my butt off to get this done. The reason that the 2% comes in from my end, we talk about Yankton, you know, if you go back to like the paradigm, basically, we did that to make a deal to get them here. And we have to be a better salesperson or a better business as a city and make better deals to get these people here. So Mitchell recently, and Ryan would probably know more, did do a deal at 2%. And the city was willing to do just about anything to get these stores there. These stores are huge stores, nationally-recognized, it is confidential, I'm not allowed to say what they are. I'm just trying to bridge the gap between the construction cost and what is needed to basically bring this to almost a break-even. The, the total was 5.7 million, and that included the, I think it was about 3 million in the building for construction, stuff like that. And then it included another, what was it, 2, what would that be, 2.7 million to redo the entire parking lot. We know that, yes, we've patched it up, but these stores, as a requirement of their leases, we have to redo the whole parking lot. They will not come in unless we do the whole parking lot. That's a significant cost. Basically, what I'm asking is for you to, and I know what Dave's talking about as far as setting precedent, if you look at, if you look at it as a city, I see that, okay? But if you look at it as a region or a state, I don't know if we've ever done deals like Paradigm out there, like as far as discounts for land and stuff. Okay, so basically how I saw it is if Mitchell already started with the 2% for us as a city to be in competition with them, that's basically how I was looking at it, is if they were doing the 2% to get these big stores in there, I was asking the city to do the same.
So I said I'd be quiet and let other people ask questions, but they know me, see? They said they know me. So you talk about leases and what they're willing to sign. When you're looking at 20 years, what is the lease of these stores? Like, are the, with the cost?
25.
Huh?
25.
25? They'll sign a 25-year lease?
So it's a 10, it's a 10 with three 5s, is that right?
So each of them is a little different. All of them are 10, sorry, I'm Ryan Tisdale, I'm from Van Bussker Companies in Sioux Falls. So the retailers typically sign a 10-year initial term with several five-year renewal options after that. So what is, they're all a little bit different, but all of them are a 10-year initial term, and then they have renewal options. I believe all of them are either four to five, five-year renewal options. So basically, it's saying that they have the rights to lease that space for 30, 35 years. And then, you know, ideally, they would then renew after that.
Maybe tell us a little bit about what Mitchell's doing. I am curious what stores or what projects they actually granted that for?
So it's, one of them is, it's actually one of the retailers that we're working on in Yankton, where they are doing a 2%, they called a, a sales tax grant. They didn't like the word rebate, so they, they said it's the same thing, but we use the word grant for how our ordinance is worded. And it was, you know, kind of like Matt said, it's really to bridge that gap in the project. The economic development folks in Mitchell, after our conversation with the landlord, they called me and they were like, Ryan, do not let this deal fall apart. If we need more funds, please call us. Our community needs this. We've been waiting for retail. Because what we've found is, in retail and commercial real estate, it's all a timing game. And you're at the mercy of when these retailers are looking, when they're not looking. And what's led a lot of these national retailers to now consider what we would call, you know, what retailers call these tertiary markets that are, you know, communities under 100,000 people. It's the fact that a lot of these communities have an old mall that, you know, used to years ago be an indoor mall, that slowly is transitioning into more of what we call a retail power center, where it's these, you know, junior box retailers side by side. And, you know, you saw it in Watertown with the Watertown Mall, and the Easthead Commons and Brookings, and projects, you know, in Mitchell and Aberdeen, where you have this repurposing of some of this older space to kind of make it new and fresh again with new retailers that are very exciting to these communities. And what I've found is, in, in scenarios where, for instance, I had a national retailer, we looked at a space in Pier five years ago, and we could not come to terms at that time. We are now circling back to Pier. The exact same space is still vacant, and we're going to, you know, negotiate on the same space to see if we can reach a deal this time around. So we're, you know, in South Dakota, we're kind of at the mercy of when these retailers are looking and when they, because I've had cases where, working on a national retail deal right now in, in Yankton, that we had looked at in 2020. It was during quarantine, I remember, because I remember coming, you know, wearing a face mask to look at the space and everything. And we, that quarter, they called me and they said, all, you know, tier four deals and below are, are on pause indefinitely, and they are now since coming back to the table. So it was, you know, from 2020 to today, it is the first time that they've since said, okay, let's relook at Yankton. So we, we do see that in, in these retailers, that it's kind of a timing game. And when we have their attention, we try to move with a purpose, and we always say time kills deals, the faster we can get the deals done, you know. Ironically, for as slow-moving as retail deals can be to come together, it can be a very much a hurry-up-and-wait sort of game, but we always try to move as quickly as possible. And I will give Matt a lot of credit. He has, you know, jumped very quickly to, to react to the demands of these retailers. I mean, it's things like, you know, one of the retailers that we're working on, you know, they send me a list, we need a, a picture of this loading dock, and a picture of this hallway, and a picture of the approach and the pylon sign, and this and that. And, I mean, he will run right out there, and 45 minutes later, he emails me all these photos that I get then to the broker in Minneapolis, who sends to the dealmaker in Chicago. And I will commend Matt for being very responsive to these retailers to do everything we can to make the deals come together. So, sorry, so I don't know if I answered the question. Back to Mitchell, very, sorry. You know, the community of Mitchell, and Pier, and some of these others who are doing sales tax rebate, you know, very motivated, they want to see these deals come together similar to Yankton. And in the case with Mitchell, they, I, I was not, I worked with the economic development folks in the city, but they already had 2% established as their kind of baseline. So I, I was not part of any negotiations with the city. They already had that as kind of what they were offering.
So it wasn't anything new?
No.
That's how they've been doing business?
Yep, it's just what they offered.
They started that in January, though, didn't they? In January, they started the 2% in Mitchell?
I believe so, because I think the ordinance they signed was from January.
And then the retailers were announced maybe three, four weeks later?
They haven't announced the retailers.
Okay. But it was three or four weeks later, right?
Well, I thought so, but apparently isn't as public as I thought.
Whenever it's sort of involving contractors and subcontractors, and they're like, well, what's this for, and what's that for, and things seem to seep out.
I'm curious, Dave, how does that, how does our 1% compare to cities like Brookings, Pier, cities in our size range?
So we've ever done an extensive review of other communities as far as sales tax rebates, our function as, as a tool. You know, we started, just from the beginning, the commission did, with share, share in the, in the gain, and 1% staying with the city, and 1% being available. And like I said earlier, to this point, that 1% has, has usually been reached prior to the sunset date. So we haven't done an extensive review of other communities and whether or not they even use this as, as a tool. I'm, I'm sure there's communities that don't even use sales tax reimbursements as a tool.
And, and quick for, just for clarifications, 2% is what the city gets on sales tax, correct?
Yep. You know, there is BBB at some point, too, depending on the business.
So we, the commission does not know who these retailers are, it's confidential, but Dave, you have, you have some familiarity with these retailers through your confidential discussions with Matt?
I'm aware that they're national retailers, they're not regional or local, and the names would be considered national, correct?
And they do fulfill, they do address sectors of our economy that would be considered leakage sectors, where?
Based on the retail analysis and the updates thereof, they would fill, they would meet that qualification or criteria of, of where Yankton is experiencing retail sales leakage, correct?
And based on the projected sales that you've seen, you project that this, the 1% rebate would fulfill the $1.7 million in approximately 11 years?
So Mr. Evans provided in his letter of application what the projected retail sales would be, and so I just did the simple math, and I think it was like 11.33 years, it would be at 1%.
So when that question or discussion happened between Dave and I, as far as, you know, when would that get met? So basically, based on the Mitchell deal and financing, so when, when I go to get financing, it is the bank's opinion that it is better to have double the money faster than a, a little bit of the money for a longer period of time. So the cap, I, I believe the cap, in my opinion, is what is most crucial to the city. The reason why I did 20 years is to make sure that we fulfill that, that cap, basically. But it would still not exceed the, the cap amount, is how I looked at it. If these do get filled in 10, 11 years, or even quicker, if we do 2%, and it fills it within five or six, then the city then collects sales tax earlier with the sacrifice of giving an extra percent, collects earlier for a longer period of time.
I'll be honest, the 2% makes me incredibly nervous, just because that means we collect nothing, depending on, I guess, what you bring in, getting, getting that it's a, their triple B can somehow impact that, unless one of them's a motel, that's probably not the bad part of it, but, or, but my question on this, I guess, is saying the 2% makes me nervous only because, and it's not your fault, we're already worried and it's on our radar, radar, if that initiated measure comes through in November, and then the grocery tax gets removed, where does that leave us? and I know, knowing that you go all in, is, that probably is, to be honest, I'm just going to be honest, is the biggest part that's really making me nervous tonight, because of that. But I know we're all in agreement, that all of us want to see something happen with, you know, continue to see work and everything going on in Event Central. Is anything, any lever in this a little bit negotiable, as far as?
I'm afraid. Like, you guys, I've been busting my butt for eight, nine months here, day in, day out, with my lawyers, with Ryan. Things change immediately. Like I said, that, you know, $300,000 just happened just a couple hours ago. I want to come in here to be prepared, and I do not want to squander this deal on 1%. And I get where you're nervous on the 2%, but in my opinion, if I'm a businessman, and somebody says, you know, we need X amount of dollars for five years, or whatever, that's how, it's basically how I look at it, it would be 2% for five or six years, versus 1% for 10 or 11. Either way, the cap's the same amount. So if I can get my money back faster, I would do that as a business. I'm not a city commissioner. I'm just telling you what I would do as a businessman. I do not want to lose these deals, and I need all the help that I can possibly get to get this done. And even, even with this 2%, there's nothing saying that something doesn't come up. But I'm trying to fight my butt off to get this, whether it's on the city level or with Ryan, every day to get this done. And on top of it, I believe, and I think Ryan believes, that as soon as these stores come in, there's going to be other ones to follow. So we won't be just talking about 14 to 17 million in sales per year, which is the estimated for these three stores total. We'd be talking beyond that, basically. And we're also talking about, you know, if it's 6 million on this, it's another $6 million in improvements, just on my end. And then it's another two or three million with the stores, I think. And then, like, we're talking about raising property taxes also. You know, it's, it's, there's just a bunch of little things that make this deal as a whole. And I get it that it's setting a precedent here, but in my opinion, Mitchell set the precedent, and we need to be in competition with them. Otherwise, we're not going to get a deal. I do not, I do not want to lose this deal based on a percent or a negotiation. Like, and I'm more than willing to negotiate, you guys, normally. But I forgot the saying that you say. Basically, it's their way or the highway, no matter what.
We always kind of say, with national retailers, you play by the golden rule. They hold all the gold, and they make all the rules. And it's, when I started this process with Matt last June, I kind of jokingly said, how much brain damage can you go through? Because it is really hard to get these deals done. It's financially hard. It's incredible. You know, you're negotiating 100-page leases, and there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, you know, landmines in these deals for a landlord. And it definitely takes a team, you know, Matt has assembled the right team around him, from, you know, legal to broker to contractor, and it's, you know, working with people who are accustomed to doing these types of deals, and understand what it takes. One thing that I will kind of talk through, that I'm not sure how much information the commission has had. So the current three retailers we're working with, collectively, they make just shy of about 90,000 square feet of space. So I want to clarify, we're not talking about, you know, a few little 2,000-square-foot tenants. Like, these are larger tenants. And, you know, like Matt said, it's our expectation that once we have these deals done, and can kind of announce them, that that will lead to others. So there you go. So that gives you a sense of the first three. Last Thursday, we had a fourth national retailer that's about a 20,000-square-foot tenant. Their dealmaker flew in from California, met their broker from Omaha here to, and when they come, they don't tell everyone they're coming. They don't want a parade. They don't want, you know, they just, they want to come under the radar, and get a feel for the community, get a feel for the space, get a feel for the property. And so, you know, to Matt's point, our expectation is not to have three new retailers here. My expectation is to have four, five, six retailers, and really kind of reinvent this property, giving Yankton more shopping options here in town. You know, as we talk about the types of retailers they are, as we talk about grocery taxes, none of them are grocers. So while you're making the decision to delay your sales tax revenue from these retailers for a fixed period of time, after that, none of them are grocers. So it's not like, oh, we're giving a deal for, you know, somebody that, you know, in the foreseeable future might not even be paying sales tax to us. All of these are true retail tenants, soft goods. They're all very, I believe will be very sought after. National retailers, the nice thing about them is they are extremely savvy in understanding where their customers are coming from. All three of these retailers are in Sioux Falls, and the fourth one as well. And they know where their shoppers are coming from. One of them, their store in Sioux Falls, is the number three store out of 1,001 stores. So these are retailers that do well in South Dakota, and they're excited to grow, if given the opportunity in South Dakota. And fortunately for Yankton, you have the real estate to do it. That's half the battle. You know, one of the challenges, for instance, you know, not to keep talking about Mitchell, but, you know, they had a couple of the bigger box spaces that opened up in Mitchell, you know, kind of got snapped up by industrial users. So it's like, you know, and like I said to Mitchell, you know, they were, they kind of reeled over that. But I said, you know, these businesses bought it, bought this real estate fair and square. You know, sometimes you don't get to pick what your building's become. And I will tell you that there are certain communities that would kill to have a property like this, to be able to have, to be able to do the deals. Because the reality is, for many of these retailers, you simply cannot afford to build new. You can't, even if you gave them land for free, because I'm working with some of these retailers for trying to do a second location in East Sioux Falls, and we can't afford to build the building for them and lease it to them. We could give them the land for free. We could give them incentives, and it's just too expensive. So the fortunate thing is, in Yankton, you have the real estate to be able to do the deals. And, you know, that's, I guess, what we're trying to do.
One of the things that is a big key play in this is current leases. So if we had current leases, I mean, it's a blessing in disguise, basically, that I don't have all these spots leased. And I've passed on multiple people to lease some of the smaller spots in here, to save these deals. But I can only do that for so long. So, like, to have the building, like Ryan said, is great, but to have the building and no leases in there, to be able to do the deal, is basically the perfect storm of everything.
That was going to be my question, Matt. Does this plan displace anything you already have in the mall?
It doesn't displace it. The only one that it affects here would be River City Gymnastics, and, I about slipped there. The tenant one encroaches a little bit into their space, but they've told me that with the amount of space that they're taking, they'll still have plenty of room there.
To me, a lot of this sounds, sounds great, right? There's a lot of things here that are very positive. I think the community has wanted something to occur at the mall. And I think we've all had conversations at different times from people saying, you know, what can we do to encourage something happening at the mall? What's giving me pause is just, is this time crunch and this pressure. I, we found out about this on Tuesday, if I'm correct, Wednesday, in the packet gave out. So that's the first that I know of it. We're talking about doing 2%, which we've never done before. We're talking about changing a $500,000, raising that limit, doing it triple from what it was before. I know that you've got a vested interest in this, obviously. I mean, right? But I also think that we have a vested interest in the community, and trying to do what's right for the community. So let me, let me, let me continue on. So we've got a vested interest to, to do our due diligence for the community. And I don't see any way that I can, that I can look people, look to the community, and tell people that I've had time to do due diligence on this. I haven't. There's no way that I can say that. So I have to be, I have to have the vested interest of the community in mind. And I know that that could be, part of that can be, that the mall, you know, and doing good things for the mall, is in the vested interest of the community. But I'm also hearing that things change every single day through this. And all of a sudden, today, there was another $300,000. And a couple of months ago, or when we, when we did the, when we gave the sales tax rebate before, it was $500,000. And now it's $1.7 million. And it was 1%, and now it's 2%. And it was 10 years, and now it's 20 years. It's all of these things, and in a timeframe of from Wednesday until now. None of the community that I'm aware of, unless they've, you know, read through and fine-toothed combed the packet, nobody knows about this. And I'm just-
Was it not advertised?
The packet is advertised, yes. It's, it's part of the packet. I'm saying that I have heard from the community numerous times, that we, that they want to be informed. They don't want decisions made where the community doesn't know, doesn't know about it. We've had numerous times where it's, where the argument has been that this comes to the commission, and it gets passed before we even know about it.
So what would be, in a future meeting, like, what would be different? Like, how would they know?
How would they know?
Yeah. Like, how would the public, how does the public not know now, but they would know if we scheduled another meeting?
They would know from this discussion that we're having right here.
Okay. Well, that's, I asked Dave, like, when this came up, if this is like a one-meeting thing, or a two-meeting thing. Like, the last one, I think, was two or whatever. But, yeah, like, this is just a one-meeting deal, from what I was told.
It is a one-meeting deal.
So basically, how I see it, and I don't know if you're a businessman or not-
I am. I'm self-employed.
Okay. So if you're self-employed, and you should probably understand more than anybody, if you have a chance to make 14 to 17 million dollars, that, in the sales tax on 14 to 17 million dollars, okay? I get it, we're deferring it for the first. It would be estimated five to six years, okay? As Dave said, we meet that early, most times. If you have a choice between getting that, or the city, or the people in the city have a choice between getting that, or not getting that at all, me as a businessman, hands down, no doubt about it, mathematics don't lie, you will make more money, no doubt about it, doing this deal than not, period. It's an impossibility for you to lose money by bringing these stores here, and bluntly doing what everybody has said. I mean, I don't know a single person that doesn't want that mall back. If you find that person, I would, I can't believe that they would be here. And we're not giving up money in anything, because if we don't do this, and these stores don't come, then we don't have them anyways, and then we miss out on our shot.
I would also state that one of the number one rules of sales is to create a sense of urgency. And I do feel that this is, there is an urgency that is being created. And I don't feel comfortable in this circumstance. I don't feel comfortable for, I don't feel comfortable in that I don't have enough knowledge of what's going on. This is one of the executive sessions. One of the things that we do in executive sessions is we have conversations about this, about these types of things, to vet things, to have a better understanding, so that we can think about these, about different ideas, and have questions answered, more than just 20 minutes. But think about it for a longer period of time, and have discussions amongst all of us, including who's proposing the proposal. And then also maybe be able to hear, like, you're talking about these national, these national tenants, you know, possibly hear who those are. I understand that it's, that you have privacy, right?
Yeah, there's, so, I can't disclose that until the leases are signed, okay? I can't sign the leases until the financing's done. I can't finance it until I know this deal. It's just how it goes. Like, we don't have a choice here. And like I said, I get that you want to think about it, and you want to know, like, everything as far as what's going on. But the bottom line is, it's pretty cut and dry. It's 14 to 17 million dollars in sales. Chances are, it's going to be paid off in five to six years. And then Yankton, for the next 20, 30 years, beyond that, will be collecting sales tax on 14 to 17 million, just in these three stores, not counting the fourth or any other ones that come in, as a business decision. Like, we said at all the other meetings, you guys, like, Yankton is open for business. You want to compete with other businesses. You want to compete with other cities. Here's your chance.
And we do want to compete, or I, excuse me, I'm saying "I", not "we", because I am one person on here. I do want the community to compete. However, there is a difference between the private sector and the public sector, and I feel my own personal feelings, that I have to have the public's best interests in mind. And right now, I am not comfortable with this compressed timeframe, and not knowing enough information. I would, I would love to, I would like to table this.
There's no way that can work.
I understand. I'm saying what my feelings are. I understand you have your feelings. You have-
It's not a feeling. It's a fact. Like, we got to get this finalized.
Okay, I'm going to ask that you, we need to have, like, no, I mean, I just want a statement, and let people finish the statement, and be recognized, please, so that it doesn't-
Sorry.
-get in a spar back and forth.
I understand you have a vested interest, and you have what your, what your view is on it. I'm trying to express mine, and trying to give an explanation of why I feel the way that I feel, and why I, why I would like to table this motion at this time, and so that we can have this discussion, and learn some more information about this.
Dave, do me a favor here, because I by no means can say, I'm an expert at economic development. I did stay at a Holiday Inn once, but I don't think that counts. Not to make light of it. But I do know, and have been told a lot in my life, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. I say that as a preference, because, you know, I think, Matt, you're making a very compelling argument as to why this makes sense. I'm thinking about it, as well as, you know, one of the things I think we've all been hit as we've run for office, when all of us stand in front of folks, is what are we going to do about the mall? What can the city do to impact the mall? So Dave, I guess my question to you, and maybe you can't even answer it. I'm sitting here as I'm trying to think about what's being presented tonight. So I want a neutral source that doesn't have a dollar- that doesn't have a dollar in the fight potentially, except for where the city. What am I missing here on why I'm feeling like, gosh, is, is this, is this a pipe dream or is this really a reality? You see what I'm saying or what I'm getting at? Like, in economic development world, it seems like this makes sense, and it's a no-brainer, but then part of me is telling me, like, I'm missing something. And, and then what's the kickback on the city? Like, what, I get we're missing on, on the sales tax, but you always do a if, but, or what is your, your test if, if not, or but for?
But for.
But for, I knew I would get to it. Give me your but for on this, then.
So I'll start with saying that I'm a, I'm a big proponent in, in areas where we're experiencing retail sales leakage of the sales tax rebate as a tool. We have, as we've discussed so many times, in South Dakota communities our size, we have very limited number of tools in the toolbox to use. And the reason that a sales tax rebate is, is so attractive is because it's performance-based. The rebate, the reimbursement will not be any more than what is generated onsite. It's not additional tax dollars that's coming from somewhere else and, and, and being rebated for a specific project. I've been very comfortable recommending that for a lot of years at that 1%, because it was kind of a, hey, everybody's sharing in the, in the community gain. If the commission decides to, to consider 2%, it would still be performance-based, so they wouldn't be reimbursed anything other than what's received. But staff would need some very specific direction about, is that the policy going forward? Is that specific to the mall because it's the mall? What's, you know, what's, what's the thought process there? And that can really only come from the, the commission, you know, as, as far as that concerned. The but for is, you know, in, you know, it's not, it's a little different than TID, because we have all the math in front of us. We have spreadsheets upon spreadsheets saying this project wouldn't happen but for the creation of a tax increment district. In this case, we have a landowner saying this project won't happen but for it being 2% instead of 1%. And I, I have no way to, to discuss that on either side, as a proponent or opponent. So, I mean, that would be, you know, the, with the amount of space that is being planned and, and being national tenants, you know, I don't know if, if we can determine the but for. I think that is in the retail sector's hands to, to decide if that is a deal breaker.
So you mentioned something that just made me think of it, too. Does it, being a national tenant, give you then the not setting a precedence? Retail leakage and a national known brand give you kind of, if, if for some reason this would go through tonight? I, I'm just asking.
So if, if you're looking for a definition of what makes the mall different, my opinion, it wouldn't be going towards trying to determine it based on whether or not it's national, because we've had a lot of local projects that have turned out really well, too, like Ace Hardware and things like that. But to me, the, the, the bigger line of delineation would be, it's an existing building that's been in a dilapidated state for a lot of years. Most of the other times that we're seeing sales tax rebate requests, it, it has to do with new projects and, on bare property, or a standalone project that's a remodel of a, of a smaller building. It's, so if you were trying to tie this or identify this as different, to me, it would be just because it's a, it's the one and only mall that's, we don't have another property that looks like that in Yankton.
So if we were define, defining it as a unicorn under those terms, are there any projects that currently exist that that would apply to, where they could potentially come to us and say, hey, can we get a 2% rebate as well?
I think you could draw a, a line and define them differently from every, every other project that we have, but I would still, if I was a commissioner, anticipate that ask to occur. But I think it's different from that perspective.
So Dave, as our economic development expert, I'm going to throw the monkey on your back, so to speak. I'm going to ask you to tell the commission what your, which you would recommend, so that people, if they haven't read the packet, they can hear it out in YouTube land.
I've been asked a question that directly before, and I, I kind of want to defer to, I want to defer to the city manager a little bit. You know, I, I, I don't know that I can, I can have a gauge on what Matt and Ryan are saying right now, because I'm not seeing the, the contract side of the, the process from, from their perspective. I'm not, I don't know if two weeks is going to change the contract. I do know retail tends to move pretty quickly. You know, the math, to me, still works at 1%, but I can understand why Mr. Evans is, is trying to get to 1.7 in five or six years as opposed to 11.3 years. I can also understand that if the city had that 1% for the first five or six years, that would be reinvested in community projects also, and, and even though, yeah, you'd get the whole 2% starting in six years under that scenario, that, you know, this is, this is one of those ones where it's, you guys are the elected officials, and it kind of comes down to, down to that. I think, I'm, I'm totally convinced that the project's viable, and it will be a great occupant of space, but you're going to be the ones that end up answering the questions when the 2% requests come.
I think another thing to look at here is not just the sales tax that these will bring in, but when you go to Sioux Falls, and you go to those stores, you go to eat there, you go to multiple other businesses when you go to Sioux Falls, people from Wagner or any other place will come here more to spend their money in our town instead of going to Sioux Falls. And they'll spend it at Fry and Pan, or, you know, any of the other local businesses, basically, on top of that. You'll be bringing in more people that want to live here, because there's, this is here. It's a domino effect. More stores will want to come in to here, and probably other places. I mean, I don't see a single negative thing on this entire thing. If we, excuse me, if we, if we don't do this, and we lose the deal, like, they could never come back. And I don't want that. And I, I, I don't know anybody in Yankton that would.
If I could beg the commission some understanding here, I've been requested to take, like, a two-to-three-minute pause in the meeting, so that legal counsel can have a conversation with Matt. So if, if you would indulge that, is that all right, for that to take place? Thank you. Just a quick two-to-three-minute recess. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call the city commission meeting back to order. Lisa, roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Brunick.
Here.
Hanoff.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Sharam.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Mosher.
Here.
City attorney, city ma, city manager Leon.
I'm here.
City attorney Denherter.
Here.
Like, we always try to be formal, but sometimes when you throw those titles in. Thank you to the commission for that indulgence. I am going to ask Ross to explain why that was requested, and why our city attorney would get up to have a discussion. So I, I do want to be clear and transparent about that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Mosher. I'm riding a conflict, because I am the personal attorney, the business attorney for Mr. Evans, and of course, I'm the city attorney. But what I did was to give a little information, given the time constraints here, is I asked for permission to disclose some information shared with me in confidence that would help connect some of these dots for all of you. You guys can do with the information as you wish. I, I do not want you to perceive that I'm advocating one way or the other on this because of this conflict, I can't do that. But what I understand is going on here, that I think you will find helpful to connect these dots, is the money, the specific number here, that 1.7 million, it's part of a global financing package that's coming together, with an understanding that these leases require certain building improvements provided by the landlord. You heard Mr. Tisdale talk about how, you know, building, a new building in, in other locations is cost prohibitive, because the landlord has to build. These projects are money upfront from the landlord, and only a certain amount of it comes from a bank, and it's a global financing package that has to come together before the leases can be signed. So that's why it's become time-sensitive. There's this financing, financing Rubik's Cube that's being combined or twisted and turned to fit a deal that allows multiple leases to be signed as part of a package. And I believe Mr. Tisdale can provide some additional background on that. It's, it's not like, if you don't approve this, these, these people won't come, because it's not directly that issue. It's not like this is money going to these retailers, and they're not going to come if you don't give the sales tax rebate, because there's nothing in it for them. You know what I mean? It's, it's about the financing package to build the project. So I hope that helps.
Yep, so these, these funds are for the benefit of the landlord to be able to make financial sense of the whole deal. And the challenge that we've run into the last couple few years, as construction prices have gone up, construction pricing has gone up far faster and far greater than any of these national retailers will pay in rent. So we might see a 30% swing in construction costs, and the tenant says, well, I can pay 8% more in rent. They just don't line up, and that's what's created all these gaps on these types of deals. So the, the, the sales tax rebate is for the benefit of the landlord to be able to afford, to make this big math equation, or I guess this Rubik's Cube puzzle fit together for the retailers. And there's a, a whole timeline to this, that these deals take, you know, a long time, like I said, you know, we've been started, we started these deals last June, and we're getting to the point that we're kind of getting through the leases, but Matt can't sign the leases until the financing is approved, because then, once the leases are signed, then there's months of construction and improvements on the project, on the property, that are needed before we deliver possession of the spaces to the tenants. Then they come in, they're doing their build-out, and then, coupled with all this, all these national retailers have blackout dates of when they will not take possession of the space. So that's where we kind of say, you know, time kills deals, and you want to keep moving to get them signed, to get things going, to get them in, so you don't, you know, we missed the date, and now we're sitting here waiting for four more months. And, you know, that's where I go back to one of these deals that, you know, I showed the old Staples space to in 2020. It was, you know, we're going to, we're going to table Tier Four deals and down, we're going to table those for a quarter or so. And here we are in 2024, finally coming back to, to having that deal resurface. So, you know, coupled with the financing piece of it, is the timeline piece of it. And I think maybe there was, I didn't do a great job explaining that, that there's just, there's a lot of dominos, but the financing, you know, is kind of domino number three with, you know, getting the tenants, figuring out what it's going to cost to, to renovate the building and renovate the property to get them.
So what falls apart? I guess I'm, I'm just thinking, if, if this is approved tonight, is this a done deal, then? These, these folks are coming? Or is there still another domino or five?
It puts Matt in a position to finish the leases and to sign them, because then he can go to the bank and get the financing approved.
So I, I kind of feel like I'm back to my original question on timeline, but a kind of a different part of it. So what does this look like? Because I feel like part of the public, if agreed upon tonight, I can already hear rumor mill starting, as you've talked about, as, you know, some of the things, or contractors or folks like that. When does public announcements get made, so that maybe if there's folks being nervous about this, they'll be like, oh, great, okay, that makes sense, now I'm glad they did it? I'm just kind of curious. What does that next timeline look like, then? What is the rest of the process? Like, approval, announcement of what they potentially are, and then, when are they actually boots-on-the-ground occupying the space? And maybe that varies, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, my hope would be we're signing leases within the spring, to be able to start swinging hammers immediately, call it Memorial Day, to get possession of the spaces to the tenants end of summer, fall. So it, it, it sounds like this, I wish I had a crystal ball, because sometimes you're shocked at how long certain deals can take. And in the case with these three retailers, it's all or nothing. They all have language in their deals that they're, they're codependent on the others. They have what we call co-tenancy clauses. One thing about national retailers, they like to be by other national retailers. It's why you'll go to shopping centers in, you know, any city in America, and you'll see many of the same retailers, kind of in that same lineup, because they say, well, their customer is my customer. customer is my customer, and my customer is the next guy's customer. So these three are kind of dominos that go down together. What I suspect is Matt ends up signing all three of these leases at the same time, where one of these leases, we could sign tomorrow. Like, we're on the tail end of negotiations. It'll take the other two for the whole thing to come together. And like with everything, some of them are easier to deal with than others. It goes back to they hold all the gold and they make all the rules, and we do our best to stay with them. And I did want to touch real quick, you know, as I commented that Matt said earlier, that made me think, you know, these three lead to others. And, you know, when you come to go shopping in Yankton, you're going to go eat in Yankton and do other things in Yankton. And what I'm trying to do also, kind of bigger picture, is, you know, even like the old Pizza Hut, I'm working on trying to get a tenant in there, a new restaurant tenant, and I'm waiting till I can say what's happening next door, because that, then to that group, which that's a national restaurant group, it kind of helps get that, get them excited when they see this sort of retail momentum, because they don't get excited seeing a big empty mall. They get excited seeing new retailers coming to Yankton and opening up. So I think you'll see that happen with properties, you know, not just the Yankton Mall or Event Central with things happening there, but I think you'll see that happening with properties around that general area, is that it, it helps kind of reinvigorate other properties, too.
So to kind of touch base again on the timeline, we were talking like August, September, to be able to deliver it to them. If we, if we miss that, I believe, am I, can I say blackout? What the blackout date is? It starts December. Yeah, it starts in December, and they will not open or take the space from December till April of 2025. So it's crucial to have everything in line and all construction done. And we already have the general contractor lineup. We already have all the bids, everything else. But if we miss that date, and we come into, you know, December, we miss it by a couple months or whatever, and then we come into December, then it's the blackout dates, and they will not open between December and April. So that then pushes it back four months, five months, or whatever.
Matt, question for you. So it sounds like you've been working on this for quite some time.
Yeah.
And so why, why such a sudden drop on us?
Um, so.
If you've been working for a while.
Basically, we got the numbers back last week, and that changed everything. So we estimated around 4 million at our breakeven, and the numbers came back at 5.7. And now they're at 6 with this extra 300,000, basically. So once that happened, then financing kicked in, and they're like, this ain't going to work. You need to figure something out. I talked to Ryan. Ryan tells me about the Mitchell deal, how they did it, and it blossomed from there. And like I said, these, one of the leases is ready to sign, basically. The other ones, I want to sign them all at once, because as soon as I know, you know, the financing part of it, then I'm good to go to sign them, and we can immediately start construction, so we don't miss the blackout dates. It is a very hurry up and wait. And I'm sorry to put this on you guys. It's not my intention. If I could have told you guys this months ago, it'd be different, but the timing is just terrible. The leases are ready to sign, and if I don't sign these leases, there's other people who have the lease sitting on their table, and they didn't sign it. Well, they said bye. You know, I need to get it signed as soon as possible. I need as much financing as I can possibly get so I can sign these deals and get this back for Yankton. Like, I'm trying so hard, you guys. I just want to cry. Like, I, in my opinion, like, I, I just, as a businessman, really the only thing that should stray you guys, it shouldn't be the 2%, in my opinion. It should be the cap, because the cap's the only thing that matters. If it's 2% at 100,000, like, it's, it's still the same. That's my opinion, I guess. But like, I'm just, I hit hurdles every single day, and I keep driving through. I'm still trying to drive through. Please don't think I'm trying to be aggressive or mean. I'm just pushing as hard as I can to get this deal done. I want to get these deals done.
I will talk a little bit about, so I work with, you know, dozens of national retailers, and what I find is that you're not necessarily competing with, you know, if to, you know, to tenant number three, if their deal doesn't come together, they're, we don't have to come to Yankton. We don't have to come to Aberdeen. We don't have to, they, for them, it's all about store count, because it's all about their stock. It's all about Wall Street, and they have commitments they make to their shareholders, and we're going to open X number of stores this year. And they'll say, you know, Ryan, I don't have to be in Sioux Falls. I can go to Evansville, Indiana. I'm going to go where the opportunities are to get my store count. And so that's how the, you know, these retail dealmakers are wired. So, you know, while we'd love to say that they've waited their whole life to come to Yankton or to South Dakota, the reality is they're opportunistic. They go, and they're opening stores where, where there's a community that has the right real estate. And there's other cases where they just say, well, we'll pass on the market until the right location opens up. You know, that was a case where in Sioux Falls, Chick-fil-A opened, what, a year or two ago? And I remember me and another broker who, we both do a lot of national retail, we sat down with the city of Sioux Falls to explain, like, we said to them, you know, you guys have to understand, Chick-fil-A waited for the right location, and they will just pass the market over if that right location isn't available, or the right, you know, Chipotle next to Chick-fil-A. They waited eight years to come to Sioux Falls. They're like, we're not going to come to a B location. We're not going to come to a C location. And if the location we want doesn't open up, we just don't come, because there's other communities we can go to. So, you know, while it's kind of an unfortunate reality of dealing with retailers of this nature, it is somewhat of a reality that, you know, very much a reality, I guess, that I deal with on a daily basis. So goes, goes back to, you know, with the right opportunity and the right real estate, there's something to be said about, you know, putting it together.
But also, quick question, just to be clear, you're not, so you're saying even if we do vote to pass this tonight, there, it's not guaranteed, correct?
It's not guaranteed until we sign the leases.
Okay. And so then, Dave, what happens if we vote to pass this tonight, and that deal falls through? Then what?
Then it's a performance-based sales tax rebate, which is what I like about a sales tax rebate. And if they don't perform, they don't get anything. So.
So if the building's sad empty, they don't recognize that, that same benefit? Or the types of tenants? Like, there's something to be said about having high-volume retailers in there that, you know, are ringing the cash registers versus, you know, some sort of what I call, you know, lower-density users that just don't have nearly the traffic.
Right. But, but again, if, one of the things that we do have to keep in mind, that if we do pass this 2%, then, let's say it doesn't come to fruition, then I do feel we're going to have people knocking at our door that are going to want their two, their extra percent, too.
That's very possible. That's why my question earlier was, is if the commission does decide 2% at this location, is that either A, the new policy, or is that B, this is so very different, and it's different because of these couple reasons that it, that, you know, we can tell future applicants, you know, those parameters?
Has the policy been historically that any new business or growing business is eligible for it?
We did a thorough retail analysis, and we've had it updated regularly. And so, and so the commission has targeted businesses where we're experiencing retail sales leakage. You use grocery store, that was discussed here a little bit ago. Well, in Yankton, we have like a, we sell 130% of the groceries that a town our size, you know, does. So we have a pull factor, sorry. And, and so in areas where we're experiencing retail sales leakage is what they've targeted with the sales tax rebate.
Okay. Because that same, as I've talked to other municipalities, that same conversation has come up with them of, where do you draw the line, and who's eligible, who's not? Because if somebody's opening a 900-square-foot boutique, I don't know that that does enough for our community versus, you know, like in this case, where you got, you know, 80,000 to 90,000 square feet of high-volume retailers. You know, and they're like, that obviously does more for our community than, so, and each municipality is different. They have kind of different metrics of, you know, whether it's the size or the anticipated annual revenue or something like that.
This commission has had that discussion and has done some smaller projects, because they didn't want to exclude the local startup sort of business if they were in that sector where there's retail sales leakage. So they have included some smaller projects.
But I believe that 130% number, because even like, as we were working with some of these guys, so I subscribe to a service called Placer, and Placer tracks store traffic by, it's kind of Big Brother-ish, but it tracks you by your cell phones. And every free app has code in it that tracks you. And it will say things like, you know, it's telling you, gives you a heat map of like Dunham's, for instance, where are all the people shopping that come to Dunham's in Yankton? How far away do they live? How, how frequently do they come based on how far they live? How many, like, there's 88,000 people every six months that come to Dunham's. And one of the metrics that I could share with these retailers is Dunham's in Yankton is the number one Dunham's in South Dakota, and it beats out, there's four total stores. All the others are larger communities than Yankton. So I'm trying to make that point, that Yankton has that pull factor. And even, so tenant one, when they were here and I was touring them through Yankton and through the center and everything, they said, we like communities like Yankton, you know, County C, things like that. There's reasons to come do your commerce here. There's reasons to come, you know, it's, it's a problem that, for instance, like Vermillion has a major problem with that. So Walmart just go into Vermillion, and then there was a shopping center, kind of a larger strip mall center that got built right next to, and it had a lot of the tenants that are in, where in those Walmart kind of shadow-anchored centers, like Dollar Tree and Hibbs and Maurice's and Cost Cutters and, you know, Cricket Wireless and those types. And it failed miserably. All, that whole building is now empty, and they tried to auction that building off last Monday, and it no-sailed, because nobody wants it, because there aren't retailers. Like, I tried to do a dirt-cheap deal, even with Pizza Ranch, to get them in that building, and they ended up going to Vermillion, but that building since is totally empty. And it's because Vermillion doesn't have that same pull that Yankton has. And I made the point to people, I have an investor from California calling me, convincing me, this is the best thing ever. I need to buy the strip mall in Vermillion. And I said, no, because all the stores you would want there, they're in Yankton, because Yankton is where people that are, you know, that one, two, three-hour radius, that's where they're going to shop. That's where they're going to buy groceries and buy their goods. So it's, that's one of the reasons that these retailers like communities like Yankton over, nothing against Vermillion, I like Vermillion. But it's a reality that in the retail world that they have to, that they battle.
Dave, I had a real quick question. I believe I understand this, but I'm not entirely sure. Is this, this percentage, is it tied to these specific national retailers, or if he ends up putting something else in these slots, are we still under the same, losing this 2%?
So it would be, it would be tied to the facility, and changing that number to 2%, yep, to the facility. But you could change any one of the three numbers in your motion. You know, that's all.
I was just going to say, though, but to be clear, again, it sounds like if we change anything in that motion, is that a deal breaker? Is that, is that what you're saying? So again, we're all clear?
I don't know how to explain this. I'm coming into a deal that is the hardest-fought deal of my entire life. Okay? To even get them all was the hardest-fought deal, and I fight like really hard to get these deals. And we failed numerous times before this happened. To... I can't tell the future, basically. But there's no way that this won't help me, and this will not help the city financially, as the city financially me, because you're going to get the sales tax regardless, whether it's 2% or 20 years or 40 years. Probably in five to six years, you will start seeing the sales tax on 14 to 17 million if we don't sign the fourth store, or even more stores beyond that, not including, you know, the other store that might even come to the old Pizza Hut or whatever. The city is guaranteed to make money on this deal. You will not lose money. I don't want to risk anything on this, and that's the reason why, like, for one, like, I believe that it's going to be done in like five, six years, but I put 20 on it, because I felt that it's not going to cost the city any more money if it's at a 20 versus a 15 or a 10, whatever. If it's this way, the bank looks at it, and they're like, well, that's almost impossible for you not to get your money. If we would do it for like six years or seven, they're like, eh, it says that you're going to get it paid out by then, but we don't know. It leaves no variables, and it costs, there's, there's no expense on, on either side, because if we lose these deals, like I said, and there again, I don't know. But if we do lose these deals, it's not just a hurt to the city because of the finances, it's a hurt to the city because it's still an eyesore. I mean, we're talking about putting almost 10 million into this thing total. Like, that's a lot. That's a lot of money. And it's in the center of the city, and it's, it's better that way. It's better for finances. It's, I don't see a negative thing about this entire thing. And I wish I had a crystal ball, but if, if I don't fight for the 2% and then two weeks goes by or whatever with this package, and they're like, well, if you would have got two, then we could have probably did it, you know? Then I, then, then what? And it doesn't, like I said, the cap is still at 1.7. I hesitated tonight to ask for two, you know, after what just happened an hour ago, two hours, now probably four or whatever. Like, I'm just trying so hard, you guys. And if any of you are seriously thinking no on this, like, I appreciate you talking to me. At least talk to me first and say, this is why I'm thinking no. Like, I appreciate you, Ben, saying, you know, I'm concerned because of the timeframe or whatever. I didn't like the answer, but I can at least, you know, appreciate you saying something, you know, instead of somebody just saying no. So I appreciate that.
And that's the thing, man, I, I don't own my own business, but I do know, and I say this all the time, sometimes we, we have to compromise, and, and to help get that deal done, maybe we, that's why I'm asking, is there a compromise? Because maybe if you listen to the commissioner, the commission tonight, it sounds like the 2% is, is the sticking point. So if, if there's any way, maybe we stick at 1% and try to make that work for you. That's why I'm just, sometimes we have to compromise. I, I'm hoping maybe that's possible.
Do you honestly think that it's, whether it's a small, it's, it's, sorry, I'm going to try and figure this out here. Do you honestly think that, and I get it, that Yankton's never done 2% before. I get that. And technically, we're setting precedent. But like I said, I see, I feel that, like Mitchell set precedent, and we are competing to get these stores here. Okay? I feel like, okay, my question to you is, just as a yes or no question, do you feel that the, the 2% makes a difference if the cap is 1.7, because the city pays out the same amount, no matter what?
Yeah, I see your point. I see exactly what you're saying. But my point to Dave, to everyone, is, is that if we do this 2%, we do set precedent, and so then we are going to have, whether this is a unicorn or not, we are going to have people coming to us and saying, well, we would love 2%. We're a unicorn, too.
Okay. So I'm just keeping my options open here. I'm not saying I want to do this. So.
Can I close a question?
Yeah.
So I understand where, where the commission's coming from. So I understand where, where the commission's coming from. Could you say, and this is kind of a separate thing from this item maybe, or maybe they're kind of intertwined. Could you say that for, you know, retail deals of 50,000 square feet or more, that that would warrant 2%? So it's not, somebody's opening a 900 square foot boutique and they want, come in and want 2%. Is there a way you could qualify it as kind of a larger deal is, is warranting of a higher incentive? To, to your point that then you don't have everybody coming asking for 2%, that you're like, you know, this was a bigger deal. I mean, this was, you know, upwards of, by the time we're done, we'll have, my expectation is 100 some thousand square feet of new retailers in Yankton. That would be, you know, where I expect to end up. But is there a way to qualify it that if somebody wants 2%, that you have to come in with a project of 50,000 square feet of new retailers to the market?
That's a Mr. Mingo question, I think.
I understand that a lot of other communities have done that. Past commission discussions has been trying to be as inclusive as possible with the local homegrown startup business. So even if it is a 900 square foot boutique, if it was something that we were experiencing retail leakage on, they, they discussed it and approved it because it's performance based. If, if, again, I would go back to, if you draw a line on this project, I would, I would tie it to it being the mall. And it being essentially, you know, by definition in tax increment district finance law, it, it would even have been considered slum and blight at one point. And that's state law, not City of Yankton code or anything else. That's in codified laws of definition. And this would have qualified for that. So i- if you're going to tie it to something and just say, this is why this one is the unicorn, to me, that, that makes more sense than trying to, to make it exclusive to larger national chains when past commissions have discussed trying to support, support the local entrepreneur and startup also.
I've got a, a quick question for you, Dave. Precedent wise, what we've done in the past, 1% and, and timeframe, like years wise out, what, what, what has been, what has been the standard for, for doing sales tax rebate?
1% in 10 years.
And that's where I keep coming back to is, is that we're, we've got a precedent of 1% and 10 years. That's already been something that, that we've done before. The community knows about this, right? The community has decided that, that this is what we, we as a community want to do. I am not comfortable with changing 2% and 20 years and changing that precedent without having a discussion with the, a greater discussion with the community before doing that. I'm not saying that, that if that's what the community wants to do, that, that, that I would be against it. I, I am for trying to represent the community. What I'm not for is, is making a decision for the community without actually getting kind of the community's input on that. So for myself, I would be, you know, it's 1% in 10 years is, is the limit that I'm comfortable with within this timeframe that we're talking about right now. And if we want to change that, I think it needs to be a greater discussion amongst the community.
I'm gonna kind of go against usually what we do things here because it's been that kind of a night. We do have folks here in the public. So I don't know if anybody in the public, because I do feel like, usually we ask for that after we've made official motion. But I'm just curious if there's anybody in the public that wants to address the commission? There's been a lot discussed tonight. I'm not seeing any movement. Okay. Just wanted to ask.
So if, if this, if the mall is the unicorn, and, and again, Matt, I totally understand where you're coming from and I appreciate, I empathize with your position. Thank you for doing what you're doing. But we also have to, as Ben, Commissioner Brunick said, we're representing the public. What would it look like, and again, trying to compromise? So instead of it being 2, 2% in 20 years, if, if we were to go up percentage, you're saying we're going to recoup that in five to six years? You think the projection is that we're, that that'll be, we'll start to get, you'll get through that 2% and you said six years, is that correct?
That was the estimates. And then 1% was like 11.3.
Yeah. I mean, but what, what if it was a shortened term? What if it was eight years? So, so then now, now it's shorter than it ever has been. It hasn't been, it's been 10 years before, but now we shortened that because of the, one, it's a unicorn. But the size of the, of the, of the business coming then is going to have that much of a impact, generate that much, that it, it will sunset that much quicker.
I'm going to ask you to come up to a mic because we record our meetings.
When would the eight years commence?
That's a great question.
Yeah, so, like, the last time we started from the meeting, correct, for the 1% and the 500,000? Oh, actually, no, we didn't. We actually backtracked. We backtracked to opening date of June 26. So we set the date. I don't know if we can set the date to September or when they open, or if we just, whatever Ryan thinks, I guess.
What if, if, I'm thinking out loud here in front of everyone. So if Matt were to read eight years, if that commenced the earlier of September 1st of '25, or all three of these businesses being open for business?
The, my eight years is just, I'm also just thinking out loud. Again, I'm just trying to, trying to spur this conversation along and kind of.
I think that is probably a compromise that maybe everyone could warm up to if you had eight years from the time that all three opened. But in no event would that date be later than September 1 of next year?
But like I cautioned before, for us, if we do the 2%, even though this is, again, its own thing, it's the mall, we will still have questions to answer from people that feel like they want that extra percent.
So just out of courtesy to the finance folks that are going to have to work through this, Lisa. Yeah, so in that scenario that you're describing, you might have one or two of the three tenants open. So they'd still be under the 1% at 500 contract. And then it would change to 2%. Yeah, just from a record keeping standpoint, I know anything's possible with a magical spreadsheet, but it, it just seems like it would be better to just tie it to one event.
What if, what if it commenced, there was no?
So there is an agreement in place now.
Until?
There's an agreement in place now that would cover one of these if it opened. That's, that's where we're kind of getting a little complicated. So, yeah.
Would it be easier if you just said July 1 of '25? It switches from one to two percent. Does that make it easier in your world?
Either that or either eight years after the third tenant's onboard or something like that. And then still, you're going to have the first two that are going to be at one percentage for a while and then bump up at that point in time.
But again, I want to be clear. Mr. Mingo, you're not recommending the 2%, correct?
You know, I, I, I'm not recommending the 2%. I'm not recommending in opposition of it either, though. It's, it's a retail business situation. And I don't have, you know, unlike the Menards deal where we were, you know, part of that conversation from the beginning, this is a, a private contract. But I'll go back to say that this is performance based. And there were other aspects of the, the Menards project that were pure incentives and not performance based. So that was a different, totally different animal. This is performance based. If the sales don't take place, there's no reimbursement.
You know, I look across at this board and I don't think there's anybody on this board that doesn't want business to come to town. I've been a small business owner for the last eight years and it's, you know, business is risky. I want to support, Matt, you've done a ton of work and, and, you know, everybody on this board appreciates that. However, I don't like precedents changing. That's my discomfort with this. Ben, you, you made a statement before. Do you want to make that your motion?
Which statement? The statement to table?
If you decide to table this, you are putting this at great risk and jeopardy. It's like, we're already behind. And if this doesn't happen, I just want to let you know that the consequences could be these do not come.
And, and I, I understand that and appreciate that. For myself, the only place that I, you know, Mike's talking about compromise, trying to come up with something, because we are. We're, all of us are trying to, you know, trying to be supportive in our, in the capacity that we can be supportive. For myself, what, what I feel, I'm, I'm comfortable with is the 1% in 10 years. If we want to raise that value up to, to what's being asked, that's fine, because it is performance based.
So imagine if you, sorry, I didn't know if you were done, Ben. I'm sorry.
Are you going to make that a motion, Ben?
I would make that a motion to do 1% for 10 years and raise the, the, the cap, thank you, from 500,000 to 1.7 million. Because I do think it's a good project, but I don't think that we can change precedent in this shorter time period without having discussion with more thorough discussion with the community to ask what the community wishes.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
We won't even be able to recoup that in 10 years. I'm, okay, I, I don't know if I need to go through each person individually on who supports this and who doesn't, basically. Like, I mean, I wish the people who either did or didn't would just talk, I guess. Like, this is the biggest deal in Yankton, in my opinion. 100%. Like, this, this will not work. I, this, this will definitely not work. No way. And as far as precedent goes, you guys, Mitchell set precedent. They set it at 2%. You're thinking as a city. You're not thinking as a state or whatever. You know, like, we follow guidelines, you know, by other states and other cities all the time. Like, why can't we do the exact same thing here?
Commissioner Brunick, I'm sorry to mean to interrupt. Would you, would you consider amending your motion to a longer term that would actually?
No.
Work? Okay.
No, but I, I'm going to stick with precedent, with what we, what we have for precedent.
And I would say that's what makes me uncomfortable about your motion is the timeframe. I'm willing to, I guess, compromise on the timeframe.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. So would ask for comments relating to the motion and the second unless there's a strong amendment. Otherwise, we will have a chance to vote on that and then can come back if we need to. Because we have a motion and a second. I see somebody raising their hand. So, yes, sir, you may. Please come up to the mic and state your name if you would, and then feel free to give us your comment. We always just want to know who's addressing us.
I'm Russell Schmidt. I am not a resident of Yankton. I live in Nebraska. And as you know, a lot of traffic comes from Nebraska. Just, I have no idea what was going on here before I came to this meeting.
Yes, I do appreciate the folks from Nebraska on the waterboard there being very patient. I appreciate that.
I'm looking at this and I'm got a hard time figuring out what Yankton has to lose by approving this. You can't, I know you're afraid to set precedent, but you also are able to set your limits just to the mall. You know, your 2%, yes, other people will ask. It's the nature of the beast. You say no. That isn't that hard. You, you guys are the commissioners. You were elected for a reason. And I know you hate to stick your neck out, but sometimes you do. And it's the strike, well, the iron is hot type deal. I don't think your iron is going to get any hotter than this. If you lose it, it might not ever come back. And I consider Yankton as my hometown. I'm only five miles south. I remember the mall opening when they would cut the cake with the coins in it. And you'd see that dollar and give me that dollar. I'm just a little kid. No, they give you a quarter. But, I mean, and I really felt bad for what happened to the mall. You know, it's been going downhill for the last 30 years. It needs, something needs to be done or it needs to be torn down. I mean, that's kind of the options right now. Like you said, it was a blight thing. I mean, you, you guys can definitely say no to other things if they, if they come in for the 2% because you have all the excuses that you have with the mall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners want to say anything to the, oh, sorry, I was looking this way and then was turning my head.
I'm just going to say one thing. I have intentionally stayed out of this conversation. I have a conflict in this so that my dad is the architect. And so I'm not saying a word, but I, I have been interested in this conversation. I appreciate you all taking the time and thoughtfulness on talking about this.
Ben, I'm going to vote against the motion, not because I don't support the project, but I, I think the 2% is warranted. It's a precedent, but this unique facility maybe warrants a precedent. All across the country, we have cities full of nearly empty, deteriorating malls. And here we have a young homegrown entrepreneur. He wants to invest in our mall. He has invested in our mall and he wants to make it a successful venture. So I think the 2% rebate for Event Central over a period of 10 years for an amount not to exceed 1.7 million is what I would, I would prefer. And that's the motion I will make, depending on the outcome of yours.
Do, do you want to amend it?
They're, they're so different that I just think we ought to vote on Ben's. And if it's not successful, I'm going to make mine.
Okay. All right. Any other commission discussion as related to the motion and second at hand?
I had one, one last thing. We were talking about Domino's falling and the 1.7 million dollars. There was nothing in that that said that that had to be public money. Is that, is that correct?
I don't understand the question. Sorry.
Well, there was a, so it was a, you were talking about the Domino's falling and 1.7, you needed 1.7 million dollars, correct? Okay. And, but there was nothing in that that stated that, that 1.7 million dollars had to come from a municipality, had to come from a sales tax rebate. It, it could come from the private sector.
As far as like loan?
Yes, as far as a loan or as far as, as far as an investment from, from private parties, again.
It's the debt service. It's the debt service. So it's, if I, if there is private money, banking money, anything else beyond that, it's, it puts us in the negative and financing is not possible. So this rebate takes care of that because it's not a loan. And it is money that it, that we accumulate over years to make the loan payment.
So if there were other investors that were involved in that?
I'm not going to partner up with anybody.
Okay.
On this.
I appreciate it.
The difference there is.
Except for the city.
The difference there is bringing on other investors. They're, they're in a different scenario as a municipality where a municipality benefits from people coming to Yankton to shop and shop at a variety of places. An investor, if, you know, Bob whoever comes and says, I'll write you a check for a million seven, well, then he's looking for a dividend every month off of that where the city is in a different position to get that dividend from other revenue from other businesses that would come along with this. Where Bob whoever doesn't have that same ability to recoup that return on his investment.
I would say too, before we go on this motion and see how that goes, if it does fail and then go to the next motion, I would just want people to consider if we stay at the 1% with a cap of 1.7 million for the 20, for the full term, for the 20 years. I mean, if, if that were to happen, Matt, is, is that enough?
Okay, I feel I just finally have to say this. We need this 2%. We gotta have this 2%. With the 1%, it's. this 2%. With the 1%, it's the payments, okay? Like, if you give me, say my payment is $250 a month, and you give me $200 a month, that is helping me make my payment. But if you give me $100 per month, then I have to come up with 150 extra, okay? And here again, like, this, it's all about the cap, you guys. It's, the sooner this gets paid off, the sooner you guys are making money. You guys are making money in five to six years at the 2%. You start making it, which arguably that's not true technically, I guess. Dave did state, if you do have the 1%, that you could use that for other stuff, basically, if you did go with the 1%. I feel that this deal, basically, you guys, the 2% is already set, basically, in Mitchell. I don't know how else to say it. Like, we should think more as a state and competitive and not just individually setting precedent. Like, it's just set already. And we, do we really want to risk this? Like, how are you guys going to feel if I come back or you guys here in two, three weeks, sorry, the deal didn't go through because we did 1%? If you guys think that people are going to be knocking on your door for 2%, I would guess they're going to be knocking on your door because we didn't go with the 2% and we lost the stores. Like, people are going to be so upset, you guys, especially me. Like, I worked my butt off. Like, who would honestly think that we would be here in eight months? It seems like it's too good to be true. Like, in eight months, nine months, I already have three national tenants, almost four, trying to get into here? Like, I've worked so hard to get this and we are this close. Do we really want to waste this on a formality when the city is going to be paying the same either way, 1.7 no matter what? Like, it's just not worth the risk. It's not even close. And I wish I could wait because if I did, I could probably fill this room in the hallway and the parking lot all the way over of everybody who wants these stores in here. I guarantee you there's more people that would say the 2% and get these stores here now because we want them all back versus, you know, we should just do 1% even though we're paying the same amount of money. Like, how does that make any sense? I'm sorry.
Well, one of the things too, you also need to think about is that you say that you'd fill the room with people that would want these stores here, but you're not, we can't tell them what the stores are. You can't tell us. We don't know what the stores are.
Yeah, I just wish I could.
I know. But I'm just saying, that's what I'm saying is you can't, you might be able to fill the room by speculating on what stores they might be, but you're not going to be able to tell them who the stores are either.
And I don't think they care. I don't think they care what stores they are. They just want their mall back, just like they wanted the theater back, you know, just like, you know, Broburger gets tremendous support, you know, Jodean's, when that opens, will get tremendous support. They want their mall back. And I can speculate a little that they, you know, would like the stores, they love the stores that comes in here. I mean, they're huge stores. But I think the main thing is it's not the stores. It's, they want their mall back. They want a parking lot with no potholes in it. They want a beautiful place to look at instead of one big eyesore. It's not just Yankton. You know, it's Wagner, Tripp, Avon, Tyndall, Tabor, all those guys, all those towns have to want this so they don't have to drive all the way to Sioux Falls. They can drive a half hour or an hour here. I mean, I just, I just see everything on this whole project to be positive and not a single negative thing about it.
But to clarify, your constituents will be very excited. Like, zeroed out in my mind.
Any other commission comments? I'm going to ask again if there's anybody in the public before I say roll call. Oh, we do have somebody moving. Okay. Brian, faster. Did you hear me? No, I'm just teasing.
Brian Birch. I came back to Yankton in 2020, and I've been here on a number of other topics over the last few years. And I was not aware of this discussion until sitting in on the meeting. And I think the cap that he's looking for is 1.7 million. And it's the same amount of dollars, whether it's year number one, excuse me, 10 years or 20 years. This is just kind of a safety valve, it sounds like. You know, whenever that number of 1.7 million is reached, the deal is done, the city recoups it. You have to look at property values, property taxes that come in as a benefit to this as well. Mr. Mingo had commented, or in the paper at one point in time, that Yankton had to have 20,000 people before some of the national retailers, national restaurants, et cetera, would look at Yankton. And all of a sudden, it looks like we have potential for that attention. So, from my point of view, you're the umpires, you get to call the balls and the strikes. He's asking you to make a call. From my perspective, it seems quite reasonable that we take the initiative and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
In terms of public input, I would just say that I think a lot of us have been receiving public input on the mall for a number of years, and when are we going to do something about that mall? And I think the reason it would warrant a precedent is because of the large footprint that a mall has in a community, takes up a large amount of space. And when it's vacant and deteriorates, it's a bad look for the community. So that's why I would say the 2% would be reasonable because it's such a unique facility.
Okay, I don't see any more mics coming on. I don't see anybody in the public moving. So before us tonight is a motion and a second on a 1%, 1.7 million for 10 years. So a yes vote would support that, a no vote would not support the motion that's in front of you. So I just want to clarify that. Does that all make sense? Lisa, roll call.
Shrom?
Abstain affiliation.
Villanueva?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
Benson?
No.
Brunick?
Hi.
Hanoff?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Minor?
No.
Mayor Moser?
No. Motion carries in that it was denied. I shouldn't say it carries. The motion was denied. We do have a denied motion. Is there another motion the commission wants to bring forward on this?
Mayor Moser, I move that we grant a 2% sales tax rebate for Event Central over a period of 10 years for an amount not to exceed 1.7 million.
I'll second it. We do now have a new motion on the floor and a second for a 2% rebate for 10 years at 1.7 million. Is there anybody on the commission that wants to make comments?
Dave, if, do you need as part of this motion, the limitations that we've talked about that would explain why we're doing it for this project, but it's not necessarily a new policy that we're considering for all applicants?
I don't think that needs to be part of the motion. I think that this discussion has been recorded and that's been heard loud and clear. One thing I would say is put a start date in it, and that would be more based on what the owner's perspective is, if you want. The motion to specifically say this is for the mall only, then because it is the mall, then, you know, that wouldn't hurt either, I guess. But I think it's very clear, loud and clear at this point.
The start date would help finance in for our records.
I did have an idea. What if it started when the first one came in, not when the last one did? Because then we don't have to backtrack 1%, whatever, just as soon as, and these leases, don't. Never mind. Sorry about that. But yeah, just basically, I think as soon as the first one starts, not to be, I don't remember what date it was, that you said, July, was it July of '25 at the latest? Okay, yeah.
If we just said when the first one of these three opens for business, is that easy for the city to track?
I'm getting a nod from Dave.
I would say for simplicity's sake, that would be the start of the 10 years.
Brian, are you okay with adding that?
I would want the motion to include the start date for this to be when the first of these three retail stores occupies the facility.
And I'll second it.
Opens for business?
Opens for business.
And Bridgette, are you okay with
Yes.
Since you gave the second? Okay.
And then I also want to be clear. Does this apply to just the three or potentially four new businesses, or does this then apply to the whole site?
Dave, you said it was location-based, right?
It's the entirety of the facility, and again, it's all to try and get to that 1.7 before the sunset date, if everything goes swimmingly.
Any other?
I'm sorry, one more thing. Excluding the tenants that were there before July of '23. So it wouldn't apply to Dunham's, for example, which is something people ask quite often.
About Broburger that we just voted on right before this?
It would include that, yep.
And so again, what if this deal does not come to fruition, then it automatically sticks? Is there a way that if the deal doesn't come to fruition, that we go?
Then we'll hit the sunset date before the amount's paid out. So that's, it's performance-based. So it might sunset in 10 years after paying $300,000 or something, worst-case scenario. Yep.
Any other commission questions?
I just want to reiterate, Matt, that I'm very appreciative of all the work you've done out there. I know you've put a lot of sweat, blood, sweat and tears into it. And Ryan, I appreciate your interest in Yankton and helping us secure new retail or other opportunities as well. It's obvious that we've all really struggled with this subject before us tonight because of precedent, because of the pressure we're under to make a decision in our short timeframe. So I think the reticence or any feelings of hesitation you've gotten is because of that. It's not because we don't support you and appreciate the work that you've put into this.
Any other?
Commissioner Hanoff, would you consider amending your motion to a shorter period of time, like we discussed before?
Well, I stated 10 years. You want it shorter than 10 years?
Well, per Matt, it's going to be paid back within five to six. So I'm just wondering.
I believe that's an estimated.
Reason I stated 10 years, two reasons for that is, that's been our, you know, that's been the norm. And also, he said these initial leases are going to be for 10 years, so that's where I got the 10 years.
Okay.
Any other commission comments? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Villanueva?
No.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
No.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Abstain affiliation.
Mayor Moser?
Vote doesn't matter because we already have five, but I would say aye. So, motion carries. Appreciate everybody's patience. That is a lot to work through.
Thank you so much, everybody. You guys don't even know what this means to me. Like, I just want to do this for Yankton. I try to keep my composure. I'm sorry, Ben, if I get a little upset. I just, I just work really hard for this.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Thanks for everybody's work on this and for the conversations. Number three under new businesses, consideration of memorandum 24-62 regarding resolution 24-17, plat of page addition. You can see the full description of that location there, otherwise easier known as location, is the north side of the 3,200 block of West 11th Street. Ryan and Michelle list owners. It was notated before the meeting. The map had a slight inaccuracy in that listed Highway 50 on 8th Street. So anyways, just wanted to clarify that in the picture that that would be inaccurate. Not that it matters to the motion brought up tonight, but if anybody's looking at the map and that throws them off. What is the pleasure of the commission?
Move to approve.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number four is consideration of memorandum 24-64 regarding resolution 24-18, the acquisition of lots 1 and 2 of Block 50, Todd's addition to the city of Yankton, South Dakota, located at the southeast, located southeast of intersection of 6th Street and Walnut Street. Amy, maybe just kind of walk us through quickly what's in front of us tonight as far as kind of how this came about and kind of the area and thoughts.
Yep, I'm going to let Dave do that.
He's still at the microphone. He just hasn't spoke enough tonight, so.
Sure. You know, we have some facilities considerations that are being considered for the community regarding the library. We also have some severe parking issues in that neighborhood. And as you may remember, we've kind of watched properties in and around the area, and as properties have been for sale, we've thought about, you know, long-term vision for that neighborhood. This one came to us actually from the property owner as an opportunity for the city to acquire it. They do already have another offer for the same amount in place, but they wanted to work with the city as much as they could if the city saw the potential for a future need there. It's vacant property that could be used for programming and/or some parking in the meantime until the city's plans have come to fruition. If for some reason in the future the property isn't needed, it could be put back on the market and made available for whatever the private marketplace would do with it.
Thanks for walking through that. Any questions of the commission? If not, what's your pleasure?
It appears to me, Dave, that the property includes those, there's like seven paved parking places. It appears to me that would be part of the acquisition.
Yeah, I think it's either nine, if you just measure the dimension and don't look at the stripes, but that's correct.
I can attest that a similar lot was on the, for sale two blocks east and went sold almost instantly for the same price, same size. So, price to me makes complete sense.
And with that, I'll make the motion to support it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Motion carries. Number five under new businesses, consideration of memorandum 24-45 regarding the mayor's appointments to the Consolidated Board of Equalization. Hopefully, all of you checked your calendars in the commission packet. It was for April 9th, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. I do need three commissioners to volunteer to do that.
Are there two dates, Mayor?
Was there two?
I thought I saw an April 19th in there too.
Oh, maybe I missed something there? You could be right, Commissioner.
Looked like April 19th was for the hearing.
Oh, yep. Oh, yep, sorry. And then April 19th was the hearing. Yep, I was off a date there. Needed one in front of that. So thank you for that correction.
Just wanted people to know in case, you know, they're looking at their calendars. I would volunteer.
I've done it before and it is interesting if someone else wants to try it.
I did it last year, but I'll do it again if you'd like.
Thank you. Commissioner Villanueva? Anybody else? I need two more.
I can do it.
Sorry, I asked Ross, Brian, if you could do it.
What did he say? What did he say?
He's like, that's a great question.
I don't know why I couldn't, but if anybody else wants to do it, I'm glad to step down.
You can see how eagerly people volunteer.
You said the 10th is the first?
Well.
Just the 19th? Okay. I can be an alternate if needed.
I can, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to go with Commissioner Villanueva, Commissioner Benson, Commissioner Hanoff, and then Commissioner Johnson as an alternate. If for some reason Ross checks into this, Commissioner Hanoff will let you know, but I'm sure you're right, but we'll just double-check to make sure.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for that. I don't need a motion for that, do I? This is volunteers. Okay. Number six under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-50 recommending approval of the attached pipeline license agreement with BNSF for the Gale Drive Extension Project and authorize the city manager or her designee to enter into an agreement with BNSF as detailed in memorandum 24-50. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? And just for transparency purposes, that's just so we can continue our work out in the Gale Development by getting a sanitary sewer route put in. So for those listening, if you're wondering what that was for, seeing we have no, any other commission discussion, and anybody in the public? Roll call. Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven is consideration of memorandum 24-51 recommending the authorization of the city manager to execute the agreement for preliminary engineering services for the structure of the bridge on 23rd Street with Banner Associates, Inc. If you recall back in December, this was a restricted load bridge due to deterioration on it, and this is just to get the process started, to see what it's going to take to bring that, repair that bridge and get the load restrictions back up. Kind of FYI there. So we're looking at a contract with Banner Associates not to exceed $67,500. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine is consideration of memorandum 24-58 regarding a bid award for liquid asphalt. As you can see in your commission packet, we did not officially receive any bids, but did negotiate with Jebro, Inc., Sioux City, Iowa. We've been using them. They've got a good partnership with the city. Understanding that, what is your pleasure?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the commission? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Minor?
Aye.
Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
Motion carries. And number 10 under new business is consideration of memorandum 24-59 regarding a bid award for bituminous mix. I really love practicing saying that, bituminous mix. Just like number nine, we didn't receive any bids, but did negotiate with Knife River, which we've used for the past several years and have a good working relationship with. What is your pleasure? So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this? Anybody in the public? Roll call. Shrom?
Aye.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Brunick?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 11 is consideration of memorandum 24-56 recommending the authorization of the city of Yankton mayor to execute the water delivery agreement with Lewis and Clark Natural Resource District. Before I turn over to Kyle, I want to do thank our guests from across the river for being so patient with us tonight, and appreciate you being here as we have this discussion. I know Kyle's going to introduce all of you, so I'll stop there, but thank you for your patience and for being here tonight. Kyle, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Commission. Mayor Moser, like you said, it's a little bit different when you look at the Nebraska Real Waters. So they have the Lewis and Clark Resource, Natural Resource District, refer to NRD. And then within that, they have the Cedar Knox Rural Water Project.
Is that on? Seems pretty quiet. I just want, okay.
I'm too far away, I suppose.
That's much better. Thank you.
Ah, these things, I can't get used to these things either. So the Cedar Knox Rural Water Project is underneath the RND. So the RND would be there, the RND board would actually do the final approval of it. The Cedar Knox Rural Water Board has an advisory board also. So tonight, we have with us Annette, who is the RND manager, and Scott, who is the Cedar Knox Rural Water Project Manager, and then a couple of board members. So again, just a little bit about the agreement, really got started probably clear back in 2016, was the first time we were approached. They've had some other options they looked into, kind of started up negotiations here again lately. Back in 2016, we came up with a rate. That rate was kind of based on, we left out all the distribution costs, because they're going to be buying basically water wholesale directly from the plant. And we'd kind of looked at one, our operational costs that were directly related to the cost of making more water, things like, that I could say were kind of dollar for dollar. For every gallon of water, you're going to have to spend a few more dollars on chemical, power, repair and maintenance. Those were kind of the big ones that we could see. That gets up to about $1.15 to $1.25 per thousand. And then you start looking at the other things in that, in our operation budget that not, might not necessarily be increased, but in reality, they should have some responsibility to help pay for those things. We looked at about 10% because that's about the amount of water they'd be taking from us, would be about 10% of our capacity. So we're getting through the rest of our budget, figuring 10% of our wages that are related to this, 10% of some of our other costs. That's how we got to that $3.49 that we're at today. That rate is the same as what we offered in 2016. And how we got to that now is we've always said that that rate, their consumption rate would increase the same as our consumption rate percentage-wise. So if we do a 2% increase to our consumers on the consumption side, we would put a 2% rate increase on their consumption side. Again, they've got a very large project to tie into our facilities. They would be taking all of those costs themselves. I don't remember, but it's a, you know, it's multimillion-dollar project. They're looking at tying in two 16-inch lines to our facility. They still got to get in the engineering, all that stuff to get those things finalized. But again, we had to make sure we come and get an agreement before they started spending money on engineering. So there's still a lot to happen after this, to really get to that final project. But based on that, you know, they've got a huge risk involved, so the contract really has to be what covers their risk in terms of, ours is well-covered, they're putting in all the investment. So that's where we got to that increase being based on what we do to our own customers, assuming we would never raise rates on our own customers just to raise rates on them. So it protects them that way. We also came up with the max of 1.5 or 1.75 MGD per day. And basically, we came to that number on a couple ways. One way is we have the capacity right now, and we're not really making any revenue off that capacity. We have the capacity to serve them. The second way we got to that number is really looking at if we both continue to increase at the same rate, when we, when they get to 1.75 and you combine our usage, at that point, we would kind of be in a position where we'd have to look at adding some capacity. And that's where we really think the agreement could lead to a great partnership in the future, is then you could look at using that partnership to fund that future capacity. There's some economy of scale as you build larger projects, you bring that price per gallon down. And the other thing that's really important is we would have that partnership in the future in terms of having a regional system. For example, now, there's some funds out there, roughly 88 million coming back from the state for emergency ARPA funds that's going to infrastructure, but it's only going to regional systems. And we can't check that box right now. So this would give us an opportunity to be into a partnership that would help benefit our customers, no extra cost to our customers, bring in some revenue, and at the same time help check some of those boxes for a future and partnership that can help everybody in the future, so mutually beneficial to both parties. So.
Kyle, are they averaging, would you say, 300,000 to 400,000 gallons per day?
I would say 300,000 to 400,000 gallons a day would be your average. And they?
Kyle? So?
Sorry, you want to step up to the mic? I was going to ask you to come up anyway. I mean, you made the trip all the way over here. I'm sure you've got some things to say.
Good evening, everybody. Like Kyle said, I'm Scott Fiddler. I'm the project manager of the Cedar Knox Rural Water Project. Like he was indicating, we average about 400,000 gallons a day at this point. We peak around that 750,000 to 800,000 in the summertime. We hit a record here a year or two ago. We reached our first million. So that was kind of exciting one day, but also kept us really busy because our treatment plant, that is the absolute max. So this is really going to help our service to our customers as well.
Kyle, is this going to, if they're averaging around that $400,000, are we looking about $340,000 in revenue per year?
Right. And again, that's subtracting those costs from that chemical, power, and repair and maintenance that we would see. So again, it's a profit on paper, but at the same time, it is probably their responsibility to help cover those fees in terms of wages and things that we already have fees in place to cover on our own.
Scott, would this allow you to increase the number of, like, residential units that could tap into your water supply? Does it increase your available water so other, you know, you could have more development on that side of the river?
That's kind of part of our project as a whole. You know, we're looking at just shy of a $30 million project. We've got engineers' estimates, about $8.5 million is going towards existing pipeline upgrades, like in the south Yankton area, all along the river there. Our pipeline is at max capacity. You know, it's something we're looking to increase there. You know, we've got a waiting list of people that are wanting to hook on now that we're not taking any new customers on that area, so yeah, definitely will help.
So Kyle's found a way to make us money?
For once?
Yes, I'm not.
For once, let's just say for once.
Probably the one and only, but.
No pun intended, but the trickle-down effect of this, you know, more residential on that side of the river means more people come to Yankton to shop. So if you have people looking to move into a rural area, they can buy a place that has access to high-quality water. I mean, that's only going to add more people that want to live there.
So would you guys also serve what they're proposing for recreational developments in the Niobrara area?
We don't go as far as Niobrara. We do serve the Wyndham area.
I was going to ask you, can you clarify, like, what your district is, or?
So I don't know if you're familiar with the Devil's Nest area? That's where our treatment plant is, and we start there, and we work our way west and south. As far, I'm sorry, east. You're out of the west. Ober.
You're on the side of the river now. It changes directions. I get it.
Everything's backwards. We go as far east as Ober, and then we touch the very northern part of Hardington and kind of angled towards Crofton. So we serve the water to Crofton, Fordice, St. Alita, and Ober, and then all in between.
Kyle, I just want to make sure that this proposal holds water. I'm here all night. But I do want to make sure, so looking towards the future, I mean, obviously, Yankton, we want to grow. And so just want to make very clear to the people listening, this subtraction, I guess, from water, from our services, in no way, shape, or form will hinder or be an issue for us even years from now.
No, no, we have plenty of capacity, especially our collector well. We could do up to 20 MGD with our collector well. So no, capacity-wise, we're sitting very good, so I'm comfortable with this, otherwise I wouldn't be bringing it forward. And that's kind of part of where we came, that 1.75. That's where we kind of run out of the comfort level.
Okay.
But we're comfortable from there for well into the future.
And now, I'm just thinking out loud, is there anything, so as this is, this connection is happening, is there anything that could happen that we could do to, looking towards the future, stub out in that area for a connection later while it's open and exposed and we're adding things that would be way cheaper to do now than to do it again?
Not that I am aware of right now.
Okay.
We'll keep that in mind as we work through the design with them. Their engineers will do the design of boring under the river and where we tie in. And they'll work directly with our engineers on coming up with that. But if there's some improvements we can make at that time, we'll look at that.
Okay. Thanks, Kyle.
This might be a question more for the city manager. So with this revenue that we generate from this agreement, would we look at paying off existing loans quicker, or would we look at using it for future capital projects?
Well, you know, you have a pretty good interest rate on the loans you have for the infrastructure that we've done, so you certainly could. I don't have my readers, so you're going to have to share those numbers. But I wouldn't necessarily recommend that just because of those interest rates. You know, we'll have projects forthcoming. I think also something that we haven't really talked about as a commission lately is the cost of energy is going up significantly, as is cost of chemicals and things to run our plant, and energy-wise, Kyle uses a lot. So, you know, I think what we should do is see what that revenue is and talk about that as a group. But to me, we're going to have, you know, end up with operations and maintenance and things we're looking forward to in our own operations that we may want to consider. and things we're looking forward to in our own operations that we may want to consider. That said, the commission, you know, it's the commission's purview for what, as we go forward with the budget session.
Yeah, the thing I would add to that is probably the area we're seeing our biggest right now is the inflation is on the, the repair and maintenance costs, so, aim of the help, take on some of that would be probably the first place that I would see.
Quick question for you, Kyle. I know that you've talked about, well, lots of different benefits here. If memory serves me correctly, isn't there a benefit to the membranes themselves, to our capacity, that the more water we, we run, the, the better?
Correct. So, based on the riverbank filtration, the more water we pull through the collector well, the hardness actually becomes, this comes down, and we use our RO membranes for removing hardness. So, like, in the peak of the summer, when we're using more water, we can actually bypass more water around the membranes, and actually adds to the capacity of the facility, so, yes, there is some advantage to having more water, longer run times on our membranes, yeah, we can bypass more water, and we spend a lot of energy pushing the water through the membrane, so there is some cost savings there. Not a lot, but there is some.
Kyle, maybe you covered this, but we've covered a lot tonight, so as I'm thinking of everything in my mind right now, basically, the length of this contract, in, in kind of, this isn't like a two-year deal, or we're just gonna piece this together, you know, kind of the extent of that, and then my second question is, you know, and as we're looking at the district, thank you for putting that up on the thing, this just stays with this district, right? Like, this doesn't allow them then to trunk off what we're sending them, or they can do that, and, but that would still have to be negotiated with us, and I don't know, either one of you could answer that one, but-
Yeah, correct. So, yes, absolutely, this is a long-term agreement, and it has to be for them, they're putting a lot of investment into these pipes under the ground, and once they spend that money, borrow that money for that, it'd be really hard for them to do another facility, so this has to be long-term for them. We do have some language in there, in terms of expanding outside of their current system, that it had to be approval from the city, but again, that's not our intent, we don't want to come in and say we're trying to control your system. It would be simply to try to make sure that, as they get closer to that 1.75, if we can't serve them, that we're having that open discussion about, you know, hey, we're getting to that, we need to either come up with a, a new plan, or a joint project, and that's where that, we, part of the future would come in, so.
Scott, what's your timeline for this project? I know you're waiting for word on some funding.
Yeah, and we'll learn a lot more of that as the session unfolds down in Lincoln, it's a short session this year, it's the 16th of April, I believe, is when it closes, so we'll know more by then. As far as timeline, once we get this deal kind of finalized, informed, and approved by both your commission and our board, then we can go ahead and start with the engineering process. I'm assuming that's gonna take a fair amount of time, there'll be some pipeline and some tanks involved on our side, and just a matter of finding where we're gonna go underneath the river, so that's all gonna take some time to engineer, and then it's a matter of going out for bid, and some, I wouldn't expect it's probably gonna take a couple years before we're actually pulling water, would be my guess.
Does that involve permission then from National Park Services, or?
There'll be a little bit on the, on that side, because you are going under the river, and we do have to work with the permitting to transfer water from South Dakota to Nebraska. It's been done several times within the state of South Dakota, but we have to work through that permitting yet, so there's still a lot of pieces to put together yet, but without an agreement, there's no really reason to start doing the engineering and spending those costs, so this is just one of those steps in the, the process, it's gonna take, you know, a year, maybe two.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, Scott, we might approve this tonight, but it's still not a done deal, right? You're saying that the legislature, Nebraska Legislature and others would still have to, this would, but does this decision tonight help with that, to know that this would, could move forward?
Yes, this'll help tremendously, yes.
Other questions from the commission?
I'd like to point out that you mentioned earlier, if, given that, if this gives us the opportunity to pay off any current debt, so we have two water loans right now, one was for collection wells, that matures in 2046, that's a 3% interest rate, and that debt balances 9.9 million right now. Our second one is for the water treatment, the water treatment plant itself, that is a 2.25% interest rate, and that balance is $32.5 million right now, so that's expected to mature in 2048. So, if city residents are looking at their bill, they're gonna see a water consumption and water surcharge, those two debts are gonna be paid off with those surcharge. So, this is only regarding consumption, is what we're talking about here, just to clarify.
Then I would, I would also add to that, I think the last SRF loans, the last funding packages that went out, there was, the new loan rates are up around 4%, and probably climbing a little bit, so that's where we get back to probably not paying off our loans that are lower interest rates, more about probably not taking out future loans.
But, our discussion this evening isn't necessarily what we're going to do with that money. It's, the discussion we're having this evening is whether or not we want to share this resource.
So, I'm really excited that this proposal is before us tonight, I think it's a huge win for Yankton residents, as well as northeast Nebraska residents. It's important for all of us to have a reliable water source, and, and one that can grow as hopefully our populations and needs grow, so I hope this is the beginning of a, of great relationship where we can help each other out, being neighborly, I think, so with that, I would move that we approve this agreement.
Second. Wait, now that we have a motion and a second, is there any other commission discussion or comments? Do our friends on the other side of the river have any? I was gonna say, are you gonna stay quiet all night? You moved up front, and then you just sat there, let Scott take them all, go ahead.
Well, Scott knows all the details about the system, and where the, where it runs and where the water goes, so have to leave that to the man who knows. I also did want to introduce, we have Rush Schmidt here, he already introduced himself, I guess, a little earlier, and Terry Zavodil, also from the Nebraska side, both are customers, Scott is a customer as well. I am not, I live in Coleridge, so we have our, a water system that's not treated at all, and like it that way, but it's been a challenge to find that resource on the Nebraska side of the river, is what I'm getting at. Really glad to be able to have this relationship and this discussion. Kyle and Amy have both been very approachable since 2016, when we first initiated these conversations, but we've looked at a lot of options, because we really want to do what's best for our customers, and we want to enter an agreement that delivers the best for our customers, and I think that we've, we've come to a point where that's a possibility here, and appreciate all the time that's been spent. So, that's really all I have to say, though, so, thank you.
Appreciate that. Ross?
I'd just like to make a comment that in working on the negotiated contract that we have, I found that process to be very reasonable, these, we're starting off on a great footing with you guys as partners, so I just want to throw that out there, history with working with other partners hasn't always been the easiest, so, thanks for being good.
I would second that, and I've been to several of their board meetings, taken questions for them, and very respectful, very professional, and very, very easy to deal with, and appreciate that, and, so.
Awesome. Anybody else from the commission wanna make a comment? Anybody in the public? Anybody else? Roll call.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Weber?
Aye.